To Council to order, welcome to gallery and first order of business, we have our new Consulor Business, item 2.1, Consular McFadden.
Morning, your worship. You have a letter in on the agenda regarding library bridge funding, and I'll just read it out for the record. The library board is presently in the midst of a fundraising drive to replace all bookshelves shelving in the library. This is being done in conjunction with the installation of the new flooring. At present, the library board has raised over $100,000 with just over another $30,000 committed by sponsors. The library board is requesting that council guarantee them bridge funding in the amount of $50,000 should they need it. The total cost of the project is estimated at $200,000. The library will continue fundraising for this project and anticipate they will be able to pay the bridge funding if needed, pay back the bridge funding if needed within six to nine months. And I notice we have the fundraising chair, the librarian in the gallery if there's any questions. Now, do you want to deal with this now or back under mayor's business?
Um, I think we need, if somebody's making a motion, then we deal with it now, Consular.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second here for the motion? Consular Wilbur, discussion? Consular Javecov?
Just curious, is this handled then as a loan for the books, for the city's books?
Jim?
I'll just kick that over, Sean.
Yeah, through your worship, we would have to do a 2015 budget allocation in the event that they didn't come up with the fundraising. And if they do come up with the fundraising, then it would just drop into surplus. So we would have to...
So they do have the option of not coming up with the funds?
Well, I expect that could be, but that's not what they're suggesting. They're suggesting that they will pay back.
Jim?
Through your worship, in the capital project that council previously approved, which is flooring in the building, the reason the shelves are coming down is to get out of the way of the flooring. And the reason they need to be replaced is that many of them can't survive the being deconstructed and then reconstructed. You, later in your agenda, you have a very attractive price on the flooring, significantly under budget. And so there's going to be even allowing for a contingency and the usual whoopsies. There's going to be about $25,000 available in that budget. So I think council might want to allocate that off the top, just as a cash contribution to the project and then worry about the $25,000 if it's required.
Thank you.
Do we need an amendment to that?
Consular Parslow?
The fundraiser could guarantee the money. Could it not?
Personally?
Yes.
Well, of course, I couldn't.
I've seen you make money, so much money in one evening at some sham or other, Fred. I thought she would be no problem for you.
Some sham or other.
I was involved with it, so.
You were involved in the sham?
Yes. So.
I was only kidding.
Consular Schuman?
Do we need an amendment to specify the funding allocation from the other project, then?
Yes, you would if you were going to put the $25,000 straight out as cash.
Okay.
You're not going to amend that?
I want 50 large.
Well, so I think the amendment would be the additional 25 would come from that anticipated contingency.
That wouldn't be repayable, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So they'd be only repaying 25 potentially.
Can you loop with that, Fred? I'll move the amendment down to 25 then.
Thank you.
I don't like it.
Do I have a second here, Consular Wilbur? Consular Javecov?
They've offered to come up with 50, and so we've graciously forgiven them for 25 already. I thought we had a fiscal gap, but maybe that was just smoke. Anyways, whatever.
Further discussion? You ready for the question?
Amendment, first, your worship.
On the amendment? So where the amendment is that we're going to allocate 25 from a contingency which is not repayable?
From the other project.
From the other, from the original budget? Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. On the amendment or on the motion? Are you ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? Defeated?
What?
It was 4-2.
How did they get 25?
No, the original motion, you just voted against.
Did you vote in your favor of your amendment that they...
Yeah, there's nothing on the table now, your worship.
Did I make a goof?
You better try, you better try this again.
So on the original motion?
For 50.
We're all vote.
What's that?
You're recalling the vote.
Recalling the vote on the original motion. So the motion is that we, as amended, that we allocate 50, and the amendment on the motion is that 25 of it is forgivable or is not repayable. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Anything further, Consular McFadden?
No, thank you. Enough already.
Consular, item 2.2, Consular Wilbur has a item on Northern Development Initiative Trust.
Yeah, so NDIS has a new program called Small Love, which helps communities market their local small and home-based businesses. We would apply for it, and Brenda could correct me if I'm wrong, through economic development. And actually, there's a $600 a year charge for the webpage, but that is actually paid through NDIS. It doesn't actually come from us. So any local business that would like to participate, there's an application they fill out, they would pay $100 to the city, and the city would then in turn use that money for marketing of those businesses. It's taken off actually with a lot of businesses in north, north of British Columbia. I've talked to, I think my original list, I had 21 potential. I've talked to 27 businesses who are very interested in getting in on this program. They also hire a local photographer to take their pictures, that kind of stuff, so they keep everything very local. I met with the executive director Kathleen Conley of the Chamber and President Jeremy Earl, and they were in support of us moving ahead with that. And I have talked to another group of people that are looking to organize a downtown business association, and they're also interested. So I think this is a good way for us to market our local home-based and small businesses. And what we need basically from council is the endorsement for us to go ahead with that. So really, we're not putting out any funds. It's being covered for us, and we're going to be able to help our local small-town businesses. So I'm really excited about the project, and I hope you guys will endorse us moving ahead with that.
Thank you. Do we need Consular Schuman?
Is that a motion?
I guess that is a motion. I'm asking for...
Yeah, second, Consular Schuman, discussion. Consular Schuman?
Yeah, so I've seen this, this small-town love promotional thing happening. I've seen it happening in Cornell. I've heard it happening in other communities, and it seems to be a really successful program. So I would, I would be in support of this.
Thank you. Consular Parslow?
So Consular Wilbur said no funds, no staff time required for this?
It all is run through a contractor that NDIS has, so she actually is in charge of the webpages, setting them up. She works with the local photographer on what type of picture she wants. So really, I know Brenda's filled out the application, and we had to get that in, and it would roll out in January. But NDIS and Amy Corey would actually come up here, meet with the local businesses that are getting involved, and basically it runs through them. We do have the opportunity to have our city colors involved in that or any branding we want on that webpage. And then basically, we would, the $100 that's collected from each business, then council could decide what type of marketing they would like to do for those businesses.
Thank you. Consular Schuman?
Yeah, I've seen, I think Cornell did a calendar or something. It was a, and with a book of coupons that were involved. And each month, there was different businesses, coupons available for that month. And so there's all sorts of different things that you could actually put that money towards marketing your small, your small businesses and your small businesses in town.
Thank you.
So Burns Lake, for example, bought shopping bags that, you know, say, Love Burns Lake, right? So we could get Love Dawson Creek. So really, what they do is they promote those businesses, and they provide them, out of that $100, provide them with things that they can give out in their business. Or I know the Chamber just did, doing the Christmas shopping rollout downtown, so that's something that could be joined in with that. So really, it's just a promotion of the foundation of our community, which is small business.
Perfect. Any further discussion? You ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Consular Wilbur, for doing that. Item 3, 3.1, we have the minutes. I'm going to do all four, if that's all right with council. We've got minutes of our regular meeting of council on November 17th, minutes of our public hearing of council on bylaw 4243 of November 17th. We have minutes of the public hearing of council on 4244 of November 17th. And we have the minutes of our inaugural meeting of council on December 1st for adoption. Moved by Consular McFadden, seconded by Consular Schuman. Were there any errors or omissions in the minutes? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Is there any business arising under the minutes? Consular Parslow?
Yeah, just one item.
Miles Zero Park?
Right. The Miles Zero Park Society had its review of, undertook its review of 2014, and has developed his plan of action for 2015. President Dale Campbell will come to council to give you an overview of that. But one matter that they asked me to get clarification about is the splash park. As you know, the, there's been talk about splash park being developed in conjunction with the Rotary Lake operation, and there's been some correspondence on that matter. The Miles Zero Park Society would like to receive a letter from the city that states that it supports the, supports work to establish a splash park at the Rotary Lake component of the Miles Zero Park, on the understanding that there would be no additional cost to the city, and on the understanding that investigative work and fundraising work would be a final determination whether there would be a splash park there. But they really want to know, is this work that they are prepared to undertake supported by the city as it relates to a location for a splash park? Notwithstanding all the other correspondence that has occurred on this matter, or does the city have aspirations for a splash park being built somewhere else? So they don't want to engage in fundraising, any engagement of research and so on, unless they know that this idea has the support of the city. So I said I'd bring this to the council chambers.
Thank you. Consular Schuman?
Charlie, could you tell me, I recall there being some talk about there being alternate locations that might be better for them? I can't remember what came of that. Are they still considering Rotary Lake as the destination for such a splash park? Remember, there was something about...
Yeah, there was a group who, under the leadership of Johanna Coontz, that were looking at a splash park location, and they had engaged urban systems. And there was a report that they were looking at, let's put it, alternate locations. That society is now working with the Miles Zero Park Society and has abandoned, not the, not the quest for splash park, but it's abandoned, it's basically slid under the umbrella of the Miles Zero Park Society, and is working cooperatively with the Miles Zero Park Society with the notion of a splash park being at Rotary Lake.
Consular Wilbur?
So has the Miles Zero Park Society looked over the information that was brought forward by Johanna and Urban Systems?
Yes, it has, and that's why I've said, subject to its own investigations and the type of, they're looking at, the Peace River has a splash park operation that we're, I say we, I better step back from we, that they are looking at. And Grand Prairie, different configuration, and less, how can I call it, less exotic than was being conceived by previous consultations?
Consular Javecov?
I was originally involved with this splash park back when I was on council. And the committee, it was actually started at Mr. Mike's, by that group, looked at three different sites. They looked at Kin Park, the old swimming pool location, and Rotary Lake. And the decision then, because of the, the infrastructure that's already in place at Rotary Lake, they decided that that would be their favorite location. And I think we did run it through council at that time and got favorable response. The new information from Urban Systems, I think, is the issue, because Urban Systems had some concerns, I guess, about the location.
Consular Parslow?
Well, there are other issues as well, as it relates to, in addition to what you've said, stemmed from the requirements for the water is different from the, for Rotary Lake. But we had, we'd always thought, at least some of us had always thought, that the water cleansing system for Rotary Lake would also suffice for the splash park. That's, that's been my understanding. Correspondence from Northern Health, I believe I'm correct in saying Northern Health, and the ministry involved here says that the standards for a splash park are higher, and therefore, we're assuming that we may have to make some modifications. But there's no concern for jeopardy for the status of Rotary Lake as it is. It's just that information is leaning us to think that we may have to have some, either refinements to that or a separate system. But all that, all that Miles Zero Park Society wants really is, is this the favored location? Would you support that? And if so, they're prepared to undertake the necessary work to see if we can get this thing operative.
Thank you. Consular Schuman?
Charlie, so if the system out there to clean the water, et cetera, needs to be upgraded to add the splash park, would the Miles Zero Society and the Rotary, whichever groups are going to be in charge of this, they would be doing the fundraising for that?
Yes.
To upgrade it to facilitate the splash park?
Yeah, they, that's very clear from the Miles Zero Park Society, that they have to have confidence that it can, with its funding and revenue streams and all fundraising, it's not going to be a burden to the city, or to themselves that they can't handle. They don't see it being passed on to the city. They want to make a determination whether the Miles Zero Park Society can, if there is, if there are additional costs, there may not be, from the point of view of operate, who knows? We just don't know. We just want to really don't, do you, do, does the city give the Miles Zero Park Society blessing to, to continue its work in trying to get this established at that location? If you very strongly that that is the preferred location because of the other water amenities that are there.
Yeah, the question is really just for us, is in principle, is that the location? Because they don't want to be going through all the work, effort, energy, and money to determine if there's another location that we think would be more appropriate than Rotary Lake. All of the details around water, grandfathering as the lake, all those things would be the information that the Rotary, Miles Zero Park Society are going to have to answer. But I think the question just for us today is, if there's another location, we better be telling the Miles Zero Park Society that today, because otherwise, they go through all the time, effort, expense to do their business case for this, and then find out we, we don't approve it when they bring that back to us. Is that...
Perfectly.
Thank you.
Perfect summary.
Consular Schuman?
So then I would make the motion that we let the Miles Zero Park know that we agree with the splash park being at Rotary Lake.
Thank you. Seconded, Consular McFadden. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Thank you, Consular. Item 5, we have correspondence. First, sorry?
Charlie's got me a business...
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I just, I just, actually, just for clarification purposes, through you, your worship, to staff, where does bylaw 4234 sit at this particular moment, given that stuff was taken out of what was expected to come out of that other motion? Is it just sitting kind of dormant right now, or is it in effect?
Through your worship, it is dormant until you make your other decisions. Our understanding of council's intent is that it will all be rolled into one outcome, whatever that outcome may be.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item 5, 5.1, we have our correspondence. We have a letter from Bob Zimmer, MP, requesting for some identification of projects for the municipality. Consular Wilbur?
The library?
Airport.
The airport.
The airport.
So...
The airport.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, I think if we can make a motion, refer back to administration, we'll work on preparing a list and have that brought back to council for the early January, or is, do you want something more than that?
Through your worship, I can't really do that for you. Your timeline says that you will, the earliest you would be making decisions about your capital program for next year is February 16th, and that's before you've gone to the public.
Oh, yeah.
You wouldn't go to the public until March. Administration is not going to guess what you are going to put forward as priorities.
Consular Parslow?
Yes. There's no timeline here. I just, it's important that we keep Bob Zimmer in the loop and, and do this work, but let's not run ahead of ourselves.
Sure. Okay. So we just refer it back to administration for upon completion of our capital projects as well as our strategic priorities?
That, yep.
You know, always die away, is it too much, or something like that, whatever.
So, does that work, Jim?
Yes, it does, your worship.
So I'll make that motion. Do I have a second? Seconded, Consular Wilbur. Further discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Item 5.2, we have a series of letters in regards to our zoning amendment bylaw 4244. Consular Schuman?
For information.
Received for information, seconded, Consular Wilbur. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item 5.3, we have a letter from Manuel Achendinha, President and CEO of BC Transit. Consular Schuman?
Through you to staff, when was the last time we had, like, did we just have these guys, or has it been a while since they've been here? Can't remember.
Through your worship, the last presentation you had, Minister Luxstrom was still the Minister of Transportation, so it's been a while.
Consular Schuman?
I move that we invite them to come and give us a little update and presentation on what's happening with transit.
Thank you. Seconded? Consular Parslow, discussion?
I think it's absolutely appropriate for us. I agree with it in terms of getting an update from BC Transit and understanding the parameters with which they operate that service on behalf of, and supporting the service that we provide in the community on transit as we get moving forward in 2015 and beyond in terms of identifying those aspects that impact our fiscal position and services that we provide. And I think the better understanding we have of it, the more informed we are, the better we are to provide that direction for the community. So I'm completely in favor of getting them on.
Good.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Item 5.4, we have a letter from Clayton Hagee, Hagee Construction, in regards to the installation of water and sewer services down on 113th, I think. Consular Schuman?
Could, through you to staff, can we get a little, a little more information from staff with regards to this issue?
Yes, through your worship, this is an area of town basically in light industrial use that has no water or sewer. It's a little two-block anomaly in the, in the system. And for a long period of time, the school district owned much of the land down there and didn't require water or sewer for their, for their uses. And so we haven't had an application in quite some time. As you can see from the application, Hagee Construction has purchased a number of lots there, which they would like to develop into compliant uses. If you would like to refer this to budget, we could get some figures together for you. As you know, you are, you already have a water development cost charge, and you are intending to implement a sewer development cost charge. And so in that, in that environment, people constructing down there would go a long ways towards paying the cost of the construction.
Thank you. Consular Schuman?
So I'd move that we forward this to our budget considerations.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Consular Wilbur? Discussion?
I just got a question. They bought the four lots, and they're asking the city to service those lots for them? Is that correct?
At the moment, those lots aren't serviceable. They're asking the city to construct main lines for those four lots and for the others that are without water or sewer down there.
So why is it the city has to do that when there are other developers that are in town that are developing subdivisions and they're putting in their own infrastructure?
Well, we're counsel to consider that. It would be because these are infill, four lots out of 30-some lots. Normally now, if you were the developer that created those 30 lots, you would provide the water and sewer. That didn't happen at the time that the original development happened. So now you're retrofitting on, and this is an individual that only owns, you know, four of the 30.
Further discussion? Consular Javecov?
So when we get the report, will we get a, a kind of a picture of the costs of putting in the main lines compared to the taxes potentially that we'll be receiving? So just to give us an idea of the cost effectiveness.
Through your worship, it's kind of impossible for us to estimate taxes because we don't know what will be built there, but we can certainly speak to what the development cost charges would be on each lot there, what that could total. You know, the, the development cost charges would apply as you hook up. So existing buildings there, like he's, their shop there, would pay development cost charges as they hook up. The value that might come from construction there, it's possible to know until we know what, you know, might be constructed on the property.
Consular Javecov?
So the development cost charges, would that include all of the costs the city has incurred in putting the pipes in?
Through your worship, no, it wouldn't. But we can get you those figures. The development cost charged bylaws are set on the basis of an assist factor and a bunch of complications on that. They're not the same as a local area service that recovers the whole cost.
Thank you. Consular Parslow?
Yeah, so this is going to come back to council, but there's one other consideration I have, and I think it's covered in council policy. I mean, what guarantees does, can we secure that there's actually going to be some buildings put up there within, in a timely fashion? There is a policy that's, I don't know if it relates here, but can someone refresh my memory of how the policy to develop within a reasonable time period after the develop, after the infrastructure is put in?
Through your worship, that's a development permit, and that's not the, that's not what's in play here. The writer of the letter is asking you to consider putting in the necessary infrastructure to allow development. At the moment, those lots are sterilized. We would not issue a development permit or a, or a building permit there because current regulations require that you must be able to hook up the water and sewer.
Yeah. Thanks.
So, so we do know what we're not getting.
Yes. We're getting nothing unless something changes.
And until, and so the pressure's on us to develop, the pressure's on us to, this sprawl, the development of new, the benefits of us leveraging existing infill, to me, is something we always want to try to pursue, always taking into consideration the cost factor. And so to me, let's get the report from administration, understand what it is. We know what the average assessment of our commercial properties are going to be, the demands for that, and we can make the decision at that point, once we get the report from administration, if there's a cost benefit to us in that business view of assessment improvement in our community. So anyway, I'm, I'm in favor of us moving forward to our capital budget process. I'll make that motion.
I already did.
Did you? Good. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, Consular Parslow? Okay. Getting ready. All those in favor?
Getting ready.
Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Item 5.5, we have a letter from Grant Bowie, Mental Health and Addictions Vocational Rehab Program. Consular Schuman?
Through you to staff, do we have any... Through you to staff, do we have any proposed usage for these wood decks, or whatever they're calling them, a poplar down there?
Through your worship, the answer to that is no, they've been sitting as scrap. They have value to them, so staff isn't able to give them away or haul them to the dump, but they don't rise to the level where we think we could get the money back if we advertised.
Counselor Schuman?
I would move that we donate these wooden decks. I'm, I'm just guessing at what this is, actually, piles of wood, to this moose program. It'll keep them busy and help them up with their fundraising efforts.
Thank you. Second, Counselor, did you want a second there?
I just want to talk.
So, I need a second there first. Counselor Parslow? Counselor Rogers?
They're calling them decks, are they just not pallets?
No, it's the poplar aspen that was taken out of, and behind the exhibition grounds.
Sean's here, he can speak to that if you wish.
And piled and stacked there. The unsplit, unsplit poplar aspen wood is going to have little value in firewood if, in probably the next year, and it will cost us money to remove them.
It degrades in a hurry.
Yeah, that's correct. Your worship.
I know this.
Are you ready for the question? Further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to note that the, the moose program is a very worthwhile program, and I do believe we should support them if we can.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carry it. Thank you. Item six, so we got one more, and then we can get into delegations. So we have, item five-six, we have a letter from Sheldon Wilkinson, KFC old post regarding a request for a special occasion permit. Counselor Larry Wilber?
I'd like to make the motion that we allow them that, given if staff can verify that it doesn't conflict with anything else that could.
Thank you. Moved by, second to Counselor Parslow. Discussion?
Through your worship, this is, an earlier tournament had to be canceled because of our issues down there, and this is a replacement tournament.
Thank you. Further questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carry it. Thank you. So that gets through our correspondence. I'm going to move now to delegations at nine AM. Our first delegation, Mr. Dan Buckner and Lori Edward, Program Manager from the Peter Lawheed Institute for the BAMF Center, unfortunately got fogged in or out of Calgary, I'm not sure which, and weren't able to fly in this morning, and so we're going to have to reschedule them. I want to just update council very quickly on this program. We were, Encana and Sonovus have run a leadership, citizen leadership program in various communities across Western Canada where they do business over the last, I'm going to say, eight or nine years. I met with Encana and the BAMF folks in, I'm going to say about a month and a half or two months ago, in Calgary in regards to this, because they traditionally have run the program where they select residents or community volunteers in the citizen leadership program over a number of communities, and then put it together and run it on that basis. Encana have asked and indicated that they would like to do it this year specifically in Dawson Creek, just with the business or citizen leaders within our community, and run it through the BAMF School of Business. And, so it's a program in terms of, we identify a project, a process, an initiative, an issue that we would like to deal with through the community, the BAMF School of Business, manage that through the citizen process, developing leadership within our community. And all we are is supportive of the concept and process. So they were, I met with them, I updated council about a month ago, I'm going to say on this, they were here today to do the overview of the program because I wanted to ensure council got the understanding of the program. Because, to me, I think if we agree with the concept and pursue it, that it makes sense that we get them involved with us early, prior to our strategic planning exercise, and then at that following that, if there's something specific through that strategic exercise that we see as an initiative, whether it be whatever, economic development, or health, or whatever, then we can provide that perhaps as an opportunity to this leadership program in the community to help build and support it, and build it on behalf of the community. So, I just wanted to give you guys an update because Counselor Rogers and Counselor Jevetkov were not privy to that, and unfortunately, they weren't here, able to be here today. And so, I'm going to try and reschedule them for January 5th to get them in here prior to that strategic exercise, so that council have a full understanding of what it is. And, to me, the benefits we have is, we got to, they're going to, they're going to fund the whole thing. We got this amazing leadership opportunity to build our community, and anytime I think you have that support of your business community, why wouldn't we try to lock onto it? So, anyway, I just wanted to update for, as I say, for the benefits of Counselor Rogers and Jevetkov. Counselor Schuman?
So, just a question, so, the BAMF School of Business, they will come to Dawson Creek and facilitate this, or?
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It sounds lovely.
And it's a one-year process, and they certainly have, I know that the community has been involved in it in the past with different members of the community who have participated in it, but when they said they wanted to do it specifically in Dawson Creek just for our community, I think what an, what an amazing opportunity for us to build that leadership within our community for our business community and citizens. Anyway, we'll bring it forward in January, and then council will be able to consider it at that point. Thank you. So our next item six-point-two, we have Pam Sawyers and Bonnie Harper from Northern Health are in attendance regarding an update they want to provide on the smoking bylaw number four-two-four-oh. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Good morning, I'm Pam Sawyers, and I'm a tobacco enforcement officer with Northern Health. This is Bonnie Harper, and she is a tobacco reduction coordinator with Northern Health. So we're here, I'm here today, and then Bonnie will speak with another thing, to talk about the proposed bylaw that's in place right now, and we're asking for an amendment to these outdoor patio section, which speaks to food established, establishment patio, or licensed establishment patio clearly designed for people at least nineteen years of age or older. I'm here to speak to some of the changes in liquor licensing that came about in the summer that council may not be aware of, which is, any licensed facility for ages nineteen years or older may apply, may apply to the liquor licensing branch for an exemption. And this exemption will allow any youth, accompanied by a parent or guardian, access to a previously nineteen-age establishment. A facility to the new open town that has applied is Spikes Downtown. So they have applied and been approved for certain times, six to ten, I believe, is the maximum that they can have, so they can have youth come in. Where this speaks to the, the smoking bylaw is, council may be aware that places like Rockwells or Spikes, you may have looked at this exemption based on the fact that youth may not be on these premises. But now, with this smoking, sorry, with this liquor licensing exemption, youth may be on site and present. So we'd like to speak to this amendment based on the changes with the liquor licensing branch. Does anybody have any questions on this change?
Counselor Wilber?
Yeah, it was my understanding, so I'm not sure if maybe I'm looking at differently than you guys are reading it, but that we had put in place that those particular type of businesses would have to post on the entrance way to their decks, that you had to be nineteen years of old or older to be on there.
Okay.
Does that take care of that amendment that you're asking for? Because I'm thinking of Spikes, I don't think they have a deck, I know Rockwells has a deck, and that is their smoking area. So if they're not allowing nineteen-year-olds out there, and I don't think they've applied, how does, how is what you're asking affect their business, I guess is what I'm hoping.
With the current research that's available around the particulates that hang in the air and bind to the other particles that are in the air, there's evidence through that research, supported by other more current research, that it hangs in the air for a considerable period of time. So, depending on the timeframes associated with things, weather conditions, and the airflow in that particular area, if the building is in front, the wind's coming from this direction, and the patio is over here, they're not going to get that clearance of air. It goes back also to the number of people who are smoking in that particular vicinity, and the buildup of air particulates that hang for a longer period of time. The other concern with the patios and the locations of the patios would come in reference to the buffer zone that will be in place, and the location of where the smoking patios are. So, if we take, continue with the example of Rockwells, when you walk into the front entrance of Rockwells, the buffer zone will be seven-point-five meters from that front entrance, but it, it incur, it incurs that area around the front, which would encompass pretty much all of their patio. For the distance of.
Further questions? Counselor Schuman?
And I'm sorry to have my back to you, but I broke my leg, so my foot is up. And, but, from the way I read the amendments to the bylaw that we have, it seems to me that if they're going to allow smoking on their patios, they're not going to allow anyone under the age of nineteen. So to me, we've got it covered off. They can't have it both ways, in my eyes. They can't allow the minors, according to our bylaw, the way it's amended and proposed, proposed amendments. If they have the minors on the deck, then they have to forego having the smoking on the deck. And with regards to Spikes, I know they have no deck, so I'm not sure how it applies to them, and.
That was just an example of a facility that has applied. All facilities now have the ability to apply?
Right. Yeah, to me, it seems like it's going to be either-or. Either they allow the minors on the deck and there's no smoking, or there's smoking on the deck and no minors. I think we have it covered.
Counselor Parslow?
Well, I, I think we're getting a little off-track here perhaps, but I could be off-track as well, so maybe you can sort me out. So we have this proposed bylaw which allows smoking for people on patios. But now the liquor laws have changed whereby you can now bring youth into the premises. Let's take a premise that has a patio, and it has an enclosed part as well. Isn't the issue now the particulate matter from smoking on the deck, which may well be prohibit underage people from going there, but that particular matter is now going to drift into the rest of the building, unless it's properly ventilated, I assume, where youth could well be? Isn't, isn't that also part of the issue?
Well, as a tobacco reduction coordinator representing the health side and the prevention side of the picture of this, we also have a concern for the servers and the employees who have to work out on those patios. And we recognize that there are a number of situations where employees are not always in a position of power, and so they're obligated to serve and do their job duties as directed. And so, there's a responsibility for protecting the workers who work for very long periods of time. Some of the shifts are eight-hour shifts, and some of the shifts are twelve-hour shifts, and if somebody doesn't show up, sometimes they can be longer. And so, when we look at the buffer zones for protection, we're also looking at the environments themselves. With the current research that has come out, we're looking at, it was specifically designed for outdoor patios, and they found a high risk for workers. And they found that as, as Counselor Parslow is indicating, there, the smoke just doesn't go straight up and leave, depending on the conditions, it can be there for a period of time, or it can reach into surrounding areas. So our concern is around protection for the workers, and it's also around the support for all of the other businesses who have outdoor patios in the community, supporting their leading edge and their, their progressive ways of working with their smoke-free patios, and they've been extremely successful for a large number of years. And I would like to see this bylaw represent the health issues and represent the responsible responses that a number of the other restaurant owners and establishments have demonstrated in our community, and to follow suit with that, to support that.
Thank you. Counselor Jevetkov?
Isn't there already a law against smoking in a public place where people are working? I mean, I, I believe that when I was working, you weren't even allowed to smoke in a pickup.
It's not, not, that's not indoors, this is, we were talking about outdoors, so there is.
But where, where people are working, I think Compensation Branch or Worker Safety or whatever have a rule that you can't smoke where people are working. So, how, how do you smoke on a patio where people are serving, like, servers are working? Like, is it, is this sort of duplicate, a duplicate effort, or?
I, I think that it confirms the fact of, and supports the fact of smoke-free patios.
So, I guess my point is, if there's an issue, if there's somebody that's allowing smoking deck where there's servers employed, would that not be something that you'd refer to workplace safety to deal with? Because I believe there's been businesses that have been suspended for a number of days for allowing smoking on their premises.
I, I think that's a very strong supporting argument for including it in our bylaw, because a portion of the bylaw is also communication, and it's also representing support from a municipal level to a number of the other WorkSafe BC regulations that are in place, as well as how this liquor legislation comes into play. I think they all come together, and our municipal government level strengthens and communicates and educates around that area. So having it in our, in our bylaw would be a very strong stand for, at our municipal level.
Thank you. Jim, sorry?
Through your worship, just for clarity here, so that we don't lose track of this, I'm not aware that Northern Health is the regulatory body for worker safety. In fact, I believe it's WorkSafe BC. WorkSafe BC does allow employees to be serving smoking customers in an outdoor setting. What you're being asked to do here is to put in municipal regulations that are over and above any provincial regulation. What you told me after the public input session was, we had perhaps overreached to be leading-edge gold standard, that we were putting in place regulations that don't exist anywhere else in the province, and you had said, let's try to find a consensus position, let's take baby steps to start. You got very strong pushback from Solas and others, saying that they need for their financial model, those outdoor patios, but they are willing to restrict them to nineteen and over if they're going to be smoking out there. That's what's in the bylaw. You're now being asked to go back to the gold standard, leading edge, that wasn't received favorably by your citizens.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
Jim has answered my question, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? So, Counselor Parslow?
Yes, notwithstanding what's just been shared, but maybe from my own understanding here, the changes in the legislation as it affects liquor licenses, you've come here because of that, right? It's just, it's not to try, it's just to try to brief council about the, the changes, and I'm not sure if that's come through, the changes and how they would impact possibly the health of youth, I thought. So, I'm just asked, what is the, can you sort of summarize your concern that spawned you coming here as a result of changes to the liquor license?
Our concern is, is that adult-only facilities, which used to be nineteen and years or older, were not as strongly relegated by the tobacco enforcement regulations as far as display smoking sales, and now that minors are going to be in these establishments, we worry about youth getting access to them, which is my legislation, but also the youth seeing the adult smoking, the effects of. the effects of tobacco smoke on our youth. And Bonnie can speak to more about that. Our concern is now that council may, just that you are aware that these establishments that were only available to adults are now also available to youth. And so I think that it's, it's very clear that some of these establishments have a different lens now, is to more of a family focus rather than an over 19. And so that's why I'm here today to speak to that.
Thank you. Jim?
Again, your worship, that applies only to liquor primary. For you're in this entire town, that applies to Rockwell's Pub only, is the only place with an outdoor patio that is liquor primary. The food primary, SOLAs, the others, Mr. Mike's, there's no change for them, and they have agreed that their patios will be 19 and over.
Thank you. So thank you. So we'll, we'll bring this back, and we're dealing with the bylaw and the remainder of the agenda. So thanks for bringing that forward this morning.
Thank you.
Item 63, we have Verna Sawyer, Dora Brown, and Rhonda Fields from the Dawson Creek Potters' Guild and the Mauzur Quilt Guild regarding access hours to the Calvin Crook Art Center. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, your worship and members of council. I'm Dory Brown from Dawson Creek Potters' Guild. I'm representing the potters. Verna Savour, Rhonda Fields from the Mauzur Quilters. I believe that you've all received the letter.
Yes, we have.
And we also have some, a list of signatures from the different groups representing us. Our concern, and I think it's, it may have been clear, may not have been in the letter, is hours of access. We're having trouble with hours of access in the new Calvin Crook facility. So we are looking at trying to make some adjustments to those.
Can I just get the mic to move over, just so we make sure we pick it up?
Believe me, you'll hear me. That won't be a problem. We would first of all like to thank you. The access is our only issue. We love our big, bright rooms in the Calvin Crook Center. Everything has been working lovely so far. In consideration to the access for the Mauzur Guild and the Potters' Guild, in the past at the old K-PAC, we were able to access, the Potters' Guild was almost 24/7, which is not really what we're after, but we are after greater access. At this point during the week, it is open from 9 until 9, I believe. And our biggest concern is on the weekends and on Friday evenings. So for both of our guilds, we are a community, and our age range runs from approximately 30 years old to citizens that are 80 years old. So with that age range, we have people that certainly can accommodate with the access that we're provided during the Friday evenings and on the weekends. For those of us that are employed elsewhere within the city, sometimes that doesn't always, that doesn't always work to go in and practice our craft during the week. We are looking forward to doing that on the weekends. The Guild has special needs.
Yeah, we have some other issues as well. Also, we run classes, and right now the access till 9 makes it very difficult to fit an evening class, because we need about, at the very minimum of three and a half hours to run a whole class. So that doesn't really leave us time. And there's a lot of time-sensitive issues, time-sensitive projects in the Potters' Guild. You know, we're working with clay, so we have a lot of issues where we have to get in to deal with something, and that's an issue. And we have four, right now we have four evenings a week, Monday to Thursday, that we're allowed in. If we run two classes, hopefully three, which would be nice, because we want to keep contributing to the community, bringing new members in, we will have only one evening, hopefully two evenings a week, that our members have any access at all. So without that access in the evenings and from Friday to Sunday, we're very limited for, for running classes, which we want, we need to bring in new members. And so we're limiting our membership and our contribution to the community. So it's kind of a cycle that's...
At this moment, that's something that has concerned us as well. One of our main instructors that we bring in, Donna Nelson, from Silver Valley, has chosen to have Sundays as her day at home with her family. So for us now, when we used to go on the weekends, our instructor days now run on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So Thursday night, we're there till 9:00. Friday, we would be there until 9:00 at night, and Saturday, we would be there. Now, this comes at a cost that, for the Quilters' Guild, we put money in, as well as from our Arts Council grants for education, and we also open ourselves up to the general public quilting committee, community as well. Those hours are not working so much for us. The other thing for us is our spring tea and quilt show. This is our biggest fundraiser of the year. It happens on a Saturday. The hours of the K-PAC are 9 to 5 on the Saturday. Now, for us, we arrive generally at 8:00 in the morning to set up approximately 60 quilts, which does take some time. We are open then until 4:00, once it starts. The expectation to have all of those quilts down within an hour at the 5:00 is just not realistic. There's just no possible way that we can have that happen. Now, this year as well, because we're going to be using a new, new structures to hang the quilts, we can't just hang them on the wall like at the old K-PAC, so we're looking forward to experimenting with the new structures. We're thinking that that is going to take longer. The other one we had fine-tuned. We really would like to be able to access the K-PAC during this time. We bring in over 200 citizens from Dawson Creek to the quilt show, and we really would not want to have to have it somewhere else, you know, at a school gymnasium or something else where we could try to access. We want to bring those citizens into the K-PAC. We want them to see what K-PAC is about, because really, it's a splendid sight just walking through the main doors. So we want citizens that maybe normally wouldn't come into the K-PAC to join us in there, and that does involve access as well. The other thing that we're all concerned about at this point, that we've been informed of, will be the holiday and the summer hours. The K-PAC at this moment seems to be going around the dance schedule. Now, I can appreciate this as a dance mom. I understand the dance schedule, so I'm not going to complain about that. But I know that, you know, in the summer holidays, once we have our, the dance has their main gala at Inchega Hall, that dance is finished for the year, and we've been instructed then that five days a week, it will, it will be closed at 5:00, that the hours of K-PAC will change. It will no longer be open until 9:00 throughout the summer. So effectively, all of our meetings that start at 7:00 and go till 9:00 every Tuesday and Thursday will no longer be able to exist for the months of May, June, July, and August. For four months, if we have all of our members take all of their equipment home and we don't get together as a community, it will be really tough to keep the cohesiveness of the group. It will be extremely imperative to try to bring them back in September. And so that is a huge concern for us. I know that both groups have already noticed a loss in membership with usage, and we, we would just really appreciate your consideration in looking for either better access. In the past at the old K-PAC, which I know is a huge security issue for you guys, but I know with the Quilters' Guild, we were allowed two keys that our president and our treasurer hang, were hanging on to, and if we wanted to access after hours, we had to go with them, we would punch into the code. And I believe in all of the years, which was about 17, we didn't, we never had any issues at the K-PAC. It's kind of an element of trust. The Potters' Guild has a huge investment in their room. The Mauzur Quilters' Guild has thousands of dollars' worth of equipment in our room as well. So believe me, we are interested in the security and stuff of the building as well. So that's mostly what we're after, is just your consideration for either longer access or possibly a way that the people that rent the spaces can access the building when it's not under operational hours.
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
Hi, guys. Sorry about my back. So were, were the, your rooms be available to you on evenings, extended hours on evenings, and extended hours on weekends? Are the guilds then willing to pay for that, for the staffing that would then be required from K-PAC?
We would rather, I'm going to say realistically on my part, not. We're both nonprofit, in the sense that we don't have, we're not a business. We don't have extra money. Our group sews together, we get together to make chemotherapy quilts for the, for the hospital. So the more money that it's going to cost us to meet, the less membership we will have.
And our membership as the Potters' Guild has doubled since we moved from the old facility already. So we're already paying...
Our rent.
Our rent, sorry. Our rent has, what did I say?
You said membership.
Membership. Our rent has doubled, sorry, to the new facility. So we're already paying double with less access.
Counselor McFadden?
Good morning. At the old K-PAC, when you had a key and you went in after hours, was there any K-PAC staff there, or just you folks?
Just us.
Thank you.
Counselor Schuman?
Where was I, what was I thinking? Oh, so you say you have classes and you're putting on workshops. So are you not receiving revenues from those classes and workshops that could then be put towards the extra hours?
We charge only enough to pay for the instructors and the extra room rent. Because it's not a business, sorry, that's why we're not, you know, we don't have kind of the price of the classes marked up 75% over top of what the cost, the cost is.
If there were significant monies that had to go into hiring more people, like that we would have to pay for, I don't think that we'd get the participation from the public that we do.
Counselor Parzal?
Yes, I appreciate hearing your presentation, but I'm just a little confused. We don't run K-PAC, so why are you coming to the city? There's this, we have, there's a lease agreement between K-PAC and the city. K-PAC is responsible for this, so why, for the operation, so why are you coming to the city?
Excellent question. We have been in discussions with K-PAC continuously since we moved into the building, and we have been directed on numerous times that the issue of access is being dictated by the city of Dawson Creek based on insurances and past practices of all your other city buildings and stuff. So originally, we agree with you, that's where we've been at, is with K-PAC, and we've been directed that you guys are the ones we have to come talk to, that access and, and who can access without staff being there has been dictated by the city for security purposes.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes. In your letter, you're suggesting that a night watchman could be provided to provide you with the needed access to the building. Who do you propose is going to pay for that?
We, that is kind of our last, you know, thing. We don't want the Calvin Crook Center to cost you any more money. We know that it's cost enough, and we know that people are watching how much is spent on the Calvin Crook Center. In that, that was kind of a last-minute argument as to if a key could not be provided to us, where we could log in the code. It's going to say, at the old K-PAC, we had our own code, the Potters' Guild, well, they didn't have a code, but everybody, the music department, had their own code. So when we punched in, they knew who was in the building. They knew who was in and who left. So ultimately, our issue is the access and the possibility of being able to access it with a key when there is not staff present. The idea of a night watchman was simply a kind of a last resort, you might say, should we not be able to access it on our own.
Counselor Jevakoff?
I'm not familiar with how the Calvin Crook Center is operated. I know the model in the K-PAC up on the hill, where the city wasn't involved with any access or anything. So is there something different now? Are we handling this, is there a dictator in the city that's looking after it?
Jim?
Your worship, the, so just for context, the old building, which was run more like a private home, everybody had keys, they went in and out when they wished, had a net value of zero or negative. The new building has at least a value of $17.6 million. Part of the lease that we entered with K-PAC was exactly requiring them to restrict access to open hours for protection of that facility. There are some, for instance, for the potters, there are occasions where the kiln has to be checked on. So arrangements were made where a security firm would come in to allow an access on a one-time only. If there's an issue around an annual quilt show, I'm sure that can be worked out. But the specifics of your lease are, there will not be unrestricted access. There will, every key is coded, there are very few of them in circulation, that they won't be widely distributed. If you wish to do that, you're going to have to change the lease with K-PAC, and of course, K-PAC's going to ask you to bear the burden of the cost. Simple as that. It's not a common model for public facilities to be available 24/7 to the user. You can't get a key and go in and skate when you want at the arena, and you can't get a key, go in and swim when you want at the swimming pool. This is set up like a public facility.
Thank you. Further questions? Yes? Go ahead.
Your worship, I would like to point out that because our groups pay rent, we should have access as needed to our facility. And as, as Mr. Schut commented, we do have kilns that are often going 12 to 17 hours or so at a time, and it's our responsibility not only to look after our equipment in order to make sure it shuts off on time and doesn't overheat, but it's also, is a security issue with the building itself, that, that our equipment is, it shuts off when it's supposed to. So that's the reason why we need that better access.
Thank you. So thank you for coming.
Thank you for your consideration.
We'll bring it back, yeah, my pleasure, and we'll bring it back under Mayor's business for your request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that ends our delegation. What I would like to do is do, is there, I want to vary the agenda, because we've got such a full gallery that's here for, I'm assuming, 8.2, the residential development, that we vary after our break to move to 8.2, so that we can deal with that and get that underway. But there's one item we need to deal with ahead of that, Jim, and, or have we got it done?
No, you're, you're fine to go to 8.2.
Okay. So let's take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll move back, and we're going to go back into 8.2, the Residential Development Committee. So we have item 8.2, the zoning amendment bylaw 4244, is back on for consideration of third reading and adoption. And at this time, I want to make a motion that we rescind first and second reading of bylaw 4244. If I have a second, or, if I have a second, or I'll speak to you.
No problem. Pick one time.
Seconded by Counselor Parzal. So the issue in terms of where we're moving ahead in our community, and it's been ongoing for a year or better since we started understanding, to me, the impacts of development within our community and the impacts of that development. We are a board that sets the policy for the development and the future of our community. And I think Jim had said it when we started this process, it's probably, it is the most significant decision that this council, this board, will deal with in terms of the impacts of our community and how it guides our community, and the impacts to the community, and the attractiveness that, one, it makes for our community in terms of development, for business development, for investment development, as well as what that translates then to in terms of the quality of life and the amenities that we're able to build upon as a result of that investment that occurs within our community. I honestly don't think anybody could have anticipated in four or five years ago, as we started down the road of seeing and hearing about the unconventional resource in the Montney Gas Field and that impacts to our community today, and the excitement that's built upon that for our community as an opportunity, I don't think that will impact our community unlike anything since 1942, when 6,000 troops hit this community and changed the dynamics of our community. And I believe that's what we're faced with in the future. So obviously, everybody's been, the passion with which this subject has been brought to, to this community by our investors, by the developers, by the contractors, by our citizens, in terms of understanding and appreciating the impacts to it, and then as council, as well, facing this decision over the last year that we're trying to deal with. You know, as you kind of reflect on it a little bit in terms of, and it hit me when we, Jim and I went to Grand Prairie to meet with Mayor Given and his senior staff to talk about the impacts of a community that's grown from 15,000 or 20,000 people in 25 years to 60,000 or 70,000 people. And we talked about, for three hours, about this development in our community. And Grand Prairie, after 25 years, are still dealing with the components around it. And so, you know, there was a guy once said, made a statement, we're not looking for prof- know, there was a guy once said, made a statement, "We're not looking for perfection, we're looking to try to continue to move the bar higher," and I guess that's the dilemma that we're faced with in this board, is how do we ensure we continue to move that bar higher, taking into consideration the impacts of investment, development, business opportunities, as well as ensuring we build a neighborhood, a community, that continues to allow us to be the number-one city in Canada in 15, 20, or 25 years? And that's the dilemma that this board is faced with in terms of how we guide that, and you're never, you come to the realization, you're never going to make a decision that's going to make everybody happy, but you've got to try and make the best decision you can and in terms of continuing to guide us in that direction. And so, from my perspective, I think first, the impact of what we got in front of us today changes that too significantly, and I think we need to reconsider that bylaw and rescind it.
Questions? Comments? Counselor Jevakoff?
I think this, like, the increase in activity here started actually in 2003 within Canada, purchasing a large block of drilling rights. And I can remember all of the people that came up from Calgary and cautioned us and warned us and coaxed us to expect all this increase in activity and people and, at that time, we didn't have any developments. We had no developers here. So, we had a discussion about how we were going to prepare land for people to build houses, and we talked about the city actually doing development, and we discounted that. The mayors of the day were beating the brush in Alberta and B.C., trying to get developers interested in coming here. And finally, Pat Roherson, who was local, stuck his neck out and invested in some development, and since then, we've had some others. So, I think when you look back, there has to be an appreciation for these people. You know, they're bringing their money here, and yeah, there's a profit motive, and that's The big thing to me is that they're sticking their neck out, they're buying land, they're surveying it, they're putting in services, they're paving roads, all at their expense, and the risk is there. I mean, if the oil patch fails like it did in 1980, you know, it's their risk, it's not the city's risk. So, there has to be an appreciation for these people, and I think rescinding these two bylaws is the right thing to do.
Further discussion?
So, just to be clear-
Counselor Rogers?
That takes down 4243, we'll no longer-
We'll need a separate resolution on that, which we'll bring to you at the next meeting, but it'll be in abeyance and not enforced. Now, if something replaces this motion, then of course, you'd want to roll those changes into that other bylaw as well.
Thank you. Counselor Wilber?
In saying that, then, Jim, if there is going to be changes brought forward, would we be better to make a motion now to rescind that other bylaw, 4234?
Uh, yes. That's a perfectly reasonable thing to do.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried? Sorry, you're opposed?
No, I'm-
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry.
I'm going to take a motion that we also rescind bylaw 4234.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Schuman?
Sorry? 4243.
4243.
Thank you. May force. Thank you.
Discussion. Seconded by Wisconsin's Schuman. Discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
So, your worship, we are now at the existing rules.
So, now I want to make a further motion, and I'm making a motion to bring back to the floor zoning amendment bylaw 4204, which was brought forward to council in March? Secretary Counselor Parsland? So, I'm going to speak to the motion, and for me, honestly, the balance in terms of what we have, in terms of trying to engage in development for our community, encourage and continue to stimulate the business development for our community, is not in any way, from my perspective, an influence in terms of what I'm trying to do here today, because I've beat hard with every developer, every investor, every contractor, every industry, to try to ensure that they get the message that this city is open for business, and we are open for business, and we are going to do everything we can to encourage business. My purpose of this one is seeing the densification, seeing the capacity that's being squeezed into our residential neighborhoods where we have, first of all, duplexes with suites, creates the issues of parking, it creates the issues of density that create the kind of components around that, from my perspective, are causing the concerns for our public. I think we always want to look for the opportunities to have in-law companion suites to be able to assist those homeowners who want to be able to have that income helper. RS1, or RS2, and having residents with a suite within RS2 completely allows that, and allowing that 40% model in terms of, for that residence, is exactly, in my view, and it's only my opinion, that that was intended to do. If you want to have a multi-family unit, where you want to have a up and a down, have your duplex, build your duplex. And in RS1, we restrict no suites within that. To me, the biggest worry I got and the biggest concern I have in terms of our community and guiding it is ensuring that we allow and we see a residence, a neighborhood, residential neighborhood being developed where people want to invest four or five or six or $700,000 into their residence and want to have that neighborhood, and my worry today is that that isn't occurring and we don't allow, and we're not having that opportunity to build that. And so, for me, it's one step in allowing us to move forward with guiding the community in a direction that I think will be, allow us to see a community we're proud of, but also continue to still not change lot sizes, not change the issues around how big we make the lots or how small we make the lots, allow that development to occur in a specific, deliberate, and strategic manner that we think is positive. And so, from that perspective, that's my purpose in bringing back this motion, and that's the three components it does. No suites and duplexes. If you have a duplex, or suite, a residence in RS2, the size of that suite is regulated, and if you're in RS1, there is no suite allowed in the residence, and if you do have a suite within your residence in RS2, then you provide an off-street parking spot for it. And I think it's one step in allowing us to move forward.
Counselor Schuman?
Well, for starters, March was a really long time, and thanks for the Coles notes on that bylaw, but I was wondering if we could maybe have it, get a copy of that bylaw? Is it somewhere?
Well, it'll be brought, it'll be brought back.
In front, but we're talking about this now.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Anyways, I also want to comment that I'm not necessarily sure that the issues that we're facing, the problems that the residents in the neighborhoods are complaining about is going to be fixed through zoning. The main issue that I hear all the time is parking. I don't know that we can fix that through zoning. I mean, I live in an area where it's mostly single-family homes, it's an older neighborhood, I don't suspect there's a whole lot of suites going on in that neighborhood, and, you know, it's a, it's quite an obstacle course getting down the streets in my neighborhood, and, you know, I'm not quite sure that the zoning amendment that is being brought forward, though I don't have it in front of me, is going to deal appropriately with rooming houses, which I think are also one of the biggest problems facing our neighborhoods as well. And so, I'm not exactly convinced that we're going to fix these problems simply by getting rid of suites in RS1. You know, I'm absolutely in favor of this idea of the square footage, et cetera. Whether or not all of these problems are going to be fixed through zoning, I quite frankly feel that it might be better and more appropriately fixed through some sort of enhanced parking bylaw, rooming house bylaw, something of that effect, but there's things that I can agree with in that, and then there's some things that I can't.
That's a great part about democracy.
Absolutely.
Counselor Parsland?
One of the things that I, registered with me when we met with individual developers in the, from the community, was the paucity of RS1 and how RS1 was becoming, that we needed to have, as you said earlier, some, many people, that their home is their major investment, and we need to have more RS1 than we have at the present time. Many people have spoken to me about how their neighborhoods, where they've invested their, for them, their major investment has become negatively transformed by, by some of the things associated with rooming houses, sometimes with suites and so on. I'm going to support this, that we're not really working through the bylaw today, we're providing direction to staff. With reference to rooming houses, I just think we, I have been talking a lot about this, and it seems to me, a better way of dealing with rooming houses is through the business, the business license bylaw, because this, that's got nothing to do with residential development. It's just that some residents have been transformed into rooming houses, and so therefore, it's really a business that they've established, and so, I certainly intend to bring forth, not trying to confuse, because you can get so confused over this thing and have so many different amendments and so on, I'm just trying to keep this thing simple.
Yeah.
So, I'm just foreshadowing, really addressing Counselor Schuman's concern about rooming houses, I have every intention of making a motion concerning rooming houses under the business license bylaw. Is that the correct title, staff?
Uh, yes.
Business license by law?
Yeah. I'm not, that will be a discussion for another time.
Yes. So, are, we're not-
Anyway, that's, so I think rooming houses, the issue of rooming houses needs to be addressed, but not in the residential development bylaw we have before us.
We're not growing any flowers, plowing the ground up behind us, we've got to look ahead, and to me, that's the view that we need to take with respect to that.
Counselor Jevakoff, you were next?
I'm not familiar with this bylaw at all, so I'm at a disadvantage here. I can't make a determination based on a bylaw here that refers to previous bylaw and all that stuff. So, you know, to me, I don't see the panic, I don't see the crisis in dealing with this today. You know, this development is an ongoing thing. There will be houses built here next month and in 2016, 2017. I think that we need to spend a little bit of time collectively here, looking at the issues, so that we all can understand and appreciate, you know, what the concerns are, and I tend to agree that some of these things, I think we have to go to the root issue, and if it's a parking issue, I think we have to try and deal with that. If it's a rooming house issue, we have to try and deal with that. This, trying to deal with things, I guess for lack of a better word, by changing the world to prevent things from happening, to me, it's not the right way to go, but the bottom line is that I can't make a determination on this because I'm not familiar with it.
Sure, and honestly, for yourself and Counselor Rogers, we, who, we, council spent a year, meeting with, a series of two or three months, we met with investors, contractors, developers, got that feedback, the Residential Development Committee, so you guys are obviously in a catch-up mode in terms of all that stuff, but council, you know, everybody's got their own kind of pace in terms of how they're gathering that information and all that, so I respect that, and from my view-
Well, today is the first time I've seen this.
Yeah, so for us, it's, to me, it's about now trying to move it forward and bring that bylaw back so, for consideration for council.
Counselor Wilber?
The issue that, I mean, in this, I'm the one that brought forward about the Residential Development Committee, and lots of good stuff, it was recognized out of that, so, I'm not prepared, I wasn't prepared to support this bylaw then, and I'm not now, I have concerns that, and first off, I want to say thank you to all of the developers, regardless if they're local, if they're from out of town, that put in the time and the work when Counselor Parsland asked them to bring us back point-by-point form information, and they did, so thank you, all of you, because that took a lot of time and a lot of effort out of their normal work schedule, so I appreciate that. But what came out of that for me were a couple of things. I think this, we have people who have invested in our CD zones, and by just pushing this forward, we're cutting them off at the knees. We're saying, we said you could build a four-story apartment, but hey, you got two stories done, we're only going to give you another half a story. I think that's wrong. I think they've invested and we have to allow them to finish their development. They've started. The issues where we've had from parking, which I don't think this bylaw is going to take care of the parking issue, it's not within the neighborhood plan that has been put forward, it's in other areas where it was varied to allow that to happen. It's done, there's a parking issue, and now we're going to have to deal with how we handle that parking issue in snowmobile, I think that's separate. I think that if we just put, forced this through and shut a lot of development down, which is what this is going to do, we're just pushing to have illegal suites and more rooming houses, and I think we have to separate that and deal with it. But what I found interesting, when I looked, went back and went through the OCP, there were three public hearings held, they were well-attended, but what I saw actually on page three of that, what stuck out to me was, this type of growth is less expensive to taxpayers because the cost of servicing compact communities is lower than the cost of servicing low-density communities. And the other thing that came out to me was the letter we received from the ALC. In the last paragraph, there was a bit of an undertone there for me, where they said they have no concern about land that's out of the ALR. We can zone, deal with that how we wish. However, there's an undertone there where they basically say, "We're going to take that into consideration when you come and apply to take the rest of that land out of the ALR." We went with a plan on density in that neighborhood plan, which affects all of our developers in that area, so I think we have to take that into consideration. And the whole objective, and a lot of work went into that OCP, was 5.1, which was encourage housing in a range of types, tenures, and prices to ensure that people of all ages, households, types, abilities, and income levels have a diversity of housing choices. So, are we prepared to shut that down?
Thank you. Counselor Schuman?
One of my other concerns is this issue of nonconformity. And I threw you to staff, like, I'm not sure that I've ever received a specific answer to this. Is there a way of grandfathering, so the people who have already built these developments that we are now moving towards making nonconforming, is there a way of grandfathering them in, making it so that they're not going to face the issues of nonconformity? I get that, you know, this one moving forward will have development happen in a certain way, but my concern is the people who have already developed, the investors who have already invested, and how this may affect them, and can we grandfather them, Swiss cheese zone them somehow so that they are not nonconforming? Did that make any sense?
Through your worship, so Counselor Schuman is correct that there is a form of zoning called Swiss cheese zoning. Basically, you just draw a bunch of circles around every existing suite or duplex and give it its own zone that allows that in perpetuity. Another way of doing it is to have incorporated by reference into your bylaw a specific list of property identifiers, so it's a little cleaner on your map, but it makes it a little more difficult for somebody to find the information. So, either of those ways can do it, but what you're saying then is that you're comfortable with that use in perpetuity. So, I would actually suggest, if you're a counselor who is happy with that use in perpetuity, why are we changing the rules? You know, really, you, you can, if you stay with the existing rules, you've already identified that there are some issues- that there are some issues that come with that. If you change the rules midstream, there are issues that come with that. You guys just have a choice of which issues you'd rather deal with.
Counselor Rogers?
Yes, your worship. For the last few weeks, I've been gathering information about the zoning bylaw entering residential neighborhoods in Dawson Creek and Grand Perry and Fort St. John. I made a point at driving through our local neighborhoods at various times of day and night. I also talked to, I think just about every developer and every contractor and a few of the realtors, just to discuss what implications the bylaws had on them and everything else. All the people I had talked to did say that they wanted to do what was best for the community, which kind of surprised me, because usually you can't get those guys to agree on anything. But what got me thinking was about the people that can't afford the properties that are getting built, and the rentals that they're building and providing us with. So I started thinking about the people that couldn't afford those, and that would be another issue for another time. The reason I do support bylaw 4202 is because if we don't start discussing 4202-
4204.
There you go, 4204. Council needs a starting place, and I look at why it didn't get passed before, after the public meeting, maybe there should have been some amendments put to it, I'm not sure if that would be the right procedure or not, but you could have made amendments to it. So we, Council needs to start working on this right away. Developers, builders, and contractors, investors, et cetera, they're basically in a holding pattern right now, waiting for Council and the city to decide what direction we're going to go in. So as a, right now, nobody really knows the rules, what's going to end up happening, and building permits and development permits are basically on hold. We cannot afford the luxury of postponing it any longer, because these folks, they need to get to work on what they, and they're planning for the 2015 construction season. So I think that that's very important, that we get something done here today. The developers have already started their subdivisions and put together a business plan based on ROP, RCD1, and RCD2. They put together a business plan and calculated how much their infrastructure was going to cost them, and somewhere along the line, I'm pretty sure that somebody shook hands and said, okay, we got a deal. So the investors went out and they sold their plan, or, sorry, the contractors and developers sold their plan to investors, and they calculated out how much their infrastructure was going to cost them. And then they also calculated out how many units they were going to be able to put on that particular land. And now you've got Council, or what the old bylaw was going to say to them, and Counselor Wilbur had said it earlier, now you're taking away their profit, because if you start cutting down and limiting the size of lots and everything else, that cuts down on their profit, so I'm glad that's gone. I would support 4204 as is, but I would suggest some amendments for consideration. And the amendments that I would consider would be that Zone CD1 and CD2, those guys have already started, those projects, and I'd say that we just let them go with what they've done, that's what we had said to them. I think we actually have to honor that, because what you're doing is, you're changing their plan halfway through stream. And then I had-
Sorry, so are you making that by way of an amendment to the motion?
No, not yet, not until after discussion. Okay. It's important to remember for those folks that are up in CD1 and CD2, because there are alleyways and stuff like that, and they do, and the city does not snowplow lanes, and I wouldn't encourage us doing that in the future. They knew that going in, that the city didn't plow their lanes, so I just make it clear to them that we don't do that. Lot sizes, I'm confident that we'll stick to what the lot sizes were when they started the development. I do support business licenses, as a landlord of a rental unit or a rooming house, which was mentioned earlier, you should have a license, a license should be required. It's a business, and you're operating a business in the city of Dawson Creek. There is, there's also, if there's a business license that is in place from the city, that allows the city to do an inspection on that particular unit through our fire department, so that would afford some security for the renters in the neighborhood, or, sorry, the homeowners that are in the neighborhood amongst these rental units. And then they could also be identifying that they are being compliant with our regulations regarding suite sizes, et cetera. Parking requirements and sizing, I recommend that parking spaces be increased to 3.5 meters and 6 meters, and that was a suggestion by Tryon Professional Group, and they also indicated that there should be one additional off-street parking space for every bedroom in the suite. I believe that is already in 4204, is the off-suite parking, but I don't think that there would be the parking size in there. Now with 4204, it suggests suites should be limited to 40% above grade. The average house is about 1,200 square feet, so that means what you're doing is you're restricting that suite in a single-family house at 40% of the main floor, you restricted that suite down to like 400 square feet, if it's a 1,200 square feet. So that might be a little bit small. The building, BC Building Code does say that it's 50%, or 40% above and 40% below. I understand what the city's trying to do, or what we're trying to do, is get that second bedroom out of the suite, to eliminate the up-and-down duplex. I would consider maybe just taking the 40% to 50% or 60%, that's to be discussed. And after this is all sorted out, I go back to the nonconforming issue, where I suggest that property is being grandfathered in. I also recommend that we complete our decision regarding this bylaw today, and that we have staff rewrite it for consideration at the next council meeting. If any changes are required, following the first two public meetings, or first two readings, and then we go to a public meeting, I would suggest at the public meeting, after we've heard input from the public, that we amend the bylaw at that time as well, if there's any issues that some people aren't comfortable with.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Jevetkov?
One thing I forgot to mention there, the previous councils, there was an issue of the social, or the social issue came up, and we were approached by some provincial organizations about affordable housing, because there was a concern that, you know, there's a lot of people that don't have a place, they can't afford their rent, they can't afford to purchase a house, and that was discussed at great length. And the city, other than going and building some affordable houses, the only other option they have is to control through bylaws, so to approve suites. And the theory being that the more accommodation you get developed, the lower the rents will be. So that was one of the other original issues that was dealt with, and that probably was considered with this new community plan. The other thing, just a point, and Mark brought up a lot of issues there, and I guess that's my concern, I mean, to approve a bylaw and then start amending it, like, why can't we discuss it and create a bylaw that looks like it's sustainable and makes sense, and then go with that, rather than approve a bylaw and then start amending it? The lane issue, I mean, I looked at one of these lanes, it's called a lane, but there's single-family houses that front on that lane, so do we not snowplow that? Those houses, I mean, they're houses, just like mine, they front on the street, my street is plowed, why wouldn't their streets be plowed? Like, is that because it's called a lane? Do we consider it a back alley? It's not a back alley, it's a frontage road. So those kind of concerns and issues, I think, need to be hashed out, so that we come up with a bylaw that will pass at least four to three.
That's the hope. Counselor Parslow?
Am I in cue?
Yeah, you're in.
Concerning some of the comments that have been made, Counselor Wilbur, about density, this proposed bylaw 4204 does not change density from the point of view of size of lots and so on. Now, how those lots have been used is certainly is affected, but as my understanding of it, the proposed bylaw, the which we have rescinded, changed lot sizes, so the density from the point of view of the number of lots per hectare, as my understand, has not changed. There are many implications with allowing, what happened in CD1 that I think need to be thought about. I mean, if Counselor Jevetkov is talking about a lot, you correct me if I've got the wrong impression here, I'm sure you will anyway, one lot, are you saying that one lot has buildings on it with two front entrances? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying there's what they call a lane.
Yes.
The back of these lots face the lane, the front on the other street, the front of the houses face the lane.
And there's a property line separating those two?
Well, there's a lane there.
Yes, but you described-
If you picture, you've got a coach house here and a lane, and then a residence that fronts onto the lane.
But that coach house is part of the residence you're referring to, isn't it? The ones I've seen.
You're not understanding what I'm saying.
Saying across from the coach house, there's another house facing, so that lane is essentially the street.
Exactly.
But that's not how I understood it.
Anyway-
Well, that's how it is when I drove up there. Yeah.
So there are many issues, I think, unforeseen things, I've heard this expression, with these developments, how the opportunities provided by the CD1 development is emerging, and really, the view I have is what sort of, I think, you know, down the road 20 years from now, what have we wanted this city of ours to look? When I sort of traveled the road that's to the north of 8th Street, Sandwich Street, 8th Street and 17th Street, and see all that vista, and see the CD1, see the notion of this replication of what we have scattered throughout that area, just does not, is not the type of community I would like to live in. So I think the danger here is we can get, we're not here to write the bylaw, we're here to provide direction to staff, and staff will take that input and propose a bylaw, so I just want to caution against trying to write things at a council table here. I think it's important to give some direction to staff. I believe, in fairness to the building community, development community, we can't just exist in this quadmire of indecision, and so what Counselor Rogers says there, I think that we've got to give some sense of direction, so that the builders and developers can get on with their work with a sense that the ruts not going to be pulled out from under them this building season for what they have planned. And I think this 4204 gives us a starting place, and I certainly think issues of parking and the impact of certain developments on other people's investments can be addressed through another bylaw, so I'm supporting this, notwithstanding there may be one or two amendments that may be sustained, but I think we need to start off with something.
I haven't, so I'm just going to interject, because I have not heard the term resident, I have not heard the term citizen, I've not heard the engagement with our community. I keep hearing, we engage with our investors, we engage with our developers, we engage with our contractors, but I haven't once heard anybody say, well, we engage with our citizens, and we want to, we're concerned with what our citizens say. To me, the value of what's going on today is a result of citizens who have built this community over 70 or 80 years, and today, we're moving forward because of that. And to me, we need to, I think, appreciate the fact that we've got citizens in this community, that we impact every day by changing the rules on them. We impact whoever in the neighborhood ever envisioned that they'd have a duplex with suites built right beside them, and a residence they've lived in for 50 years. So the fact that we've got an attractive community today, I think we celebrate, we say, great, we got some investment going on in our community that was the foresight of previous councils and the industry that we have, but to me, we can't lose sight of the fact that we've got citizens and residents in this community that built this community. I've got an 83-year-old stepmother, or mother-in-law, who's still living in her family home for 50 years. What they did to this community in building it, we should be recognizing, we should be saying thank you, we should be saying, thank you guys for sticking with it, and take that into consideration. Today, all we're hearing about is investors, developers, and contractors, let's hear from the citizens. Counselor, no, sorry, Counselor Wilbur was next.
Counselor Schuman was actually heading in.
Counselor Schuman, go ahead. Sorry.
So, to what you just said there, I would think that every time we step out of our homes, we are hearing from our citizens on this matter, which brings me back to the first point that I made about this, was hearing from the citizens, this main sort of problem has all come back to this parking thing. So really, are we dealing with a parking issue, or are we dealing with zoning issue? I'm, you know, still a little confused on that. As far as making a decision today, I think that of course, time is of the essence, and that we need not dally on this matter, but at the same time, this is a really important decision, and so we're saying we're going to throw this back to staff, so then staff comes back with something, and then we say, well, no, we don't like that. When do we have the opportunity to sit down, as Counselor Jevetkov says, and hash this out? Like, we're saying, we shouldn't make this decision at the council table. When? Like, in these little meetings that we have all over town between council meetings, or phone calls between council meetings, is that where we hash this out?
So my point of bringing back 4204 was to begin to be able to have that conversation, I think that at least gives us, not making a decision is worse than making a bad decision.
Absolutely.
I think, to me, we've got people stuck in terms of what they're doing in our community, and by not, we've got them locked in now, who's going to make an investment, who's going to make a business decision without understanding the rules, so I think we really need to move that forward. But to me, we're bringing back 4204 for administration and for council deliberation at our next meeting, and we'll have a public hearing on, following first and second reading. Jim?
Through your worship, actually, there's no work for staff at all, 4204 is already written, it was rescinded, it'll just come back for two readings in your first meeting in January and the setting of a public hearing.
Right.
So to the extent that 4204 is not what you wish to take to the citizens, today is the day for you to make changes to that. You will- You will be having a public hearing, and if the vote is 4-3, one way or another, for what goes to that public hearing, there's a very good chance, just as in the case of the two previous public hearings, enough will be heard at the meeting that you will no longer be happy with 4204, and then this will all extend. So if there are some changes that could be made to 4204 that would generate a consensus greater than 4-3, you might want to explore them at this meeting, because as you have referenced, the uncertainty is having a chilling effect on the market. It is.
Counselor Wilbur?
Breathe, yeah. Well, you know, and I'll go back to, we did have three public hearings back when, when all of this first came about, and, you know, we had great input, and I've received lots of input from the public, and, you know, we do talk about investment and development, but I think that's because it's here, and they, and we're happy to have them here, and they have finally come after all the planning, like Mr. Jevatkov alluded to earlier. And I think there would be many people that sat here before us that would be going yahoo, and our plans worked. So time was put in there. I would, and perhaps Mr. Rogers would like to form an amendment to this bylaw, I think that the things he mentioned need to be addressed. I personally do not think that this particular bylaw is going to address rooming houses or the parking issue, I think they're separate, and we need to pull them outside of this and deal with them separately. Another thing, and perhaps staff could clarify for me, there's a little bit difference between a business license and a permit, and I see that secondary suites that are permitted, have to get a permit, would then be inspected, but also, and somebody's going to hate me for this, but if there's a permit pulled, would that not trigger BC assessment to increase the assessment on those properties because they actually have income?
So through your worship, at the moment, in the existing rules, which have not yet been changed by council, in fact, you've rescinded all bylaws that purported to do that, you can receive a building permit for a suite at duplex. So that building permit is then copied to assessment authority, and I certainly believe that they do assess those properties higher than those that are without suite. That is a one-time fee to cover the inspection of the construction. A license fee is designed to recognize that it's an ongoing business and to trigger annual or every two-year inspections on fire safety issues in the building. And so they're completely different things.
Okay, thank you. So I'm in agreeance there with some sort of business license on those, on any suites as that's income. So I'd be interested to see what Mr. Rogers is going to propose as amendment to this bylaw, because this bylaw as it sits doesn't reflect all of the input I've had from a wide scope of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Further, Counselor Rogers?
You wanted to hear from the public?
That's what I've been hearing from.
From the citizens that I have talked to, it went from, if I could swear, what a mess. A lot of the people don't even like to go up into some of the neighborhoods that are being developed right now. Some of the reasoning is, is because they talk about density, and then I talk to them about density, saying that, you know, as time goes on, what's going to end up happening is, and it's going to happen in your downtown area, and it's going to be happening as the city grows, you're going to start seeing like they eventually did in Vancouver, and that's why, where they'll tear down a house, and then you'll look at it, and you'll see two houses go up. That's using your, that's utilizing your infrastructure, it's all about density. A lot of them don't, a lot of people don't want to see the change. But as we grow as a city, yes, you're going to have to change, because I'm sure that your relatives has seen their neighborhoods change over the years, and neighborhoods will change. I've had some people, have some people tell me, oh, that's great, the only part that they really didn't like up in the subdivisions was the fact that there was concrete all the way across the driveway. At that time, that's how they were dealing with their parking issue, they were cementing right across their driveways. Some people liked that, and some people didn't like that. I've seen photos of places that had that done, different communities that had that done. I guess that's another issue. So there is a mixture of feelings out there, you're going to get that no matter where you live, some people are going to like the high density, some people aren't, some people are going to want to change, and some people don't want to change. That's just the way it's going to end up.
So are you making some recommendations, some amendments to the bylaw?
As soon as everybody's done talking.
Counselor Schuman?
So what I've got here, that he had spoke about exempt CD1 and 2 business licenses for rental suites and rooming houses, increased parking, increase the square footage from 40% to 50%, give or take, and the nonconforming to be grandfathered. Lee?
Yeah.
All right, go for it.
Move? Do you make that by way of a motion?
Not yet.
Sorry? Right, yeah?
I agree with everything with what Ms. Schuman just said. I'd also like to see that RS1 stay RS1 with no suites, and RS2 stay RS2, allowing, meaning that you can have a single-family house with a suite, meaning you could have a single-family house with no suite and a carriage suite, or a carriage unit, or a duplex. And I'm pretty sure our lot sizes are going to stay the same they were, and I would also move that we would have business licenses for all rental units. And I would also say 50% for calculating your suite sizes. Did I get them all? 50% of above grade and... 50% above grade, yeah. And not, just anything that's on above grade, your main floor, 50%, and that should give folks at least a, if it's a thousand-square-foot house, it gives them a 500-square-foot suite. But keep in mind, these, there are people that are out there, there are developers, et cetera, builders that are out there, that will say, okay, this is our suite, we get our occupancy, and then they open up a door, and there's another bedroom, oh, yeah, hallelujah. They'll do the same thing with duplexes, if you say there's no suites in duplexes. What you're going to find next is you're going to find people, and they're having this problem in Fort St. John, they get their occupancy on a duplex, and soon as the people, soon as the city guy says, oh, yeah, you're all good with your occupancy now, contractors move in, they install a kitchen into the place, and boom, you got a suite. Or else what they'll do is say, okay, this is just a butler kitchen, we don't have a stove.
Summer kitchen.
So there are ways that are going to be around all of this stuff, and some of the, and one of the comments that came out of the development committee's meeting was somebody saying, as a good developer, I can get around rigs. And being a contractor, yeah, that's true, you can.
We don't regulate or influence illegal activity, we just inspect it, right?
Jim?
So I think you should not include in any motion that's around a zoning bylaw that's going to go to public hearing, references to things like the business license bylaw, or the parking bylaw, or anything you might want to do about rooming houses, those are really not zoning matters. So this motion should refer to zoning matters.
CD1, suite size, nonconforming, providing parking for, if you have a suite in the residence...
One of the residences, Wall Street.
And that's the...
RS1 and RS2 as amendments.
But the 4204 doesn't bring in suites into RS1 anyway, so...
Well, the, I'm starting to lose track of the various amendments, but as I kind of think we're moving, there would be no suites in duplexes, there would be no suites in RS1, so in RS2, a single-family home could have a suite, that would be the only place, or a carriage house, that would be the only zone and type of dwelling in the community that would have a suite, would be a single-family home in an RS2 zone, is what I understand to be being said. So that is the only place an additional parking spot would be required. I also understand the intent of the amendments are to exclude CD1 and CD2. Now, we only have one each of those, and so that means that the owners of those properties, who happen to be out-of-town developers, would be allowed to proceed with suiteed duplexes plus a carriage house, with no additional requirement for parking, et cetera. And the other developers, such as Mr. Rorsen, who don't happen to own lands in a CD zone, are going to be captured by the new regulations, that's just what it means. So...
Double standard.
That will, I believe, lead to some vibrant comment at the public hearing. But no matter what you do, there's going to be vibrant comment at the public hearing, so...
Thank you. So Counselor Wilbur, and then Counselor Parslo?
Oh, I just wanted to say that during the last public hearing, so it was brought forward on the development that Mr. Rorsen has, that their concern was around us changing lot sizes, that kind of thing, so I don't think, we're not making any changes there on them, they can continue developing as they are as well. Is that correct, Jim?
Yes, there's no, as I understand it, there's no amendment on the floor that affects lot sizes at all. Now, it is, there was a conversation before about density, so density can be looked at in two terms, or two fashions. One is, how many lots can you create in a given area? That's not going to be changing, but how many dwelling units you can place in an area is the more common definition of density, and that will change, and I can't give you the figure, because we hadn't calculated figures that excluded CD1 and CD2, so I don't know what that change overall will be.
Counselor Parslo?
I don't like having one standard for the outside developers, another standard for local developers, which would be inherent in some of these amendments, I believe. Here, I just want to, I do not like the grandfathering that has been applied here for some of the existing developments, but I just want to throw out a question, and I don't mind professing ignorance or lack of understanding, but as someone has said, this is a very important decision here. It is my understanding that when we talk about CD1 as an example, we're talking about the comprehensive development plan between 8th Street and 17th Street, the entire area of land. Correct?
Well, there is a CD1 zone there that extends between 17th Street and about 13th Street, between the Dangerous Goods Route and 116th Avenue, so it doesn't extend all the way over to say where Brown's is?
Yes, okay. So with this proposal, we could have the replication of what we see east of 17th Street happening throughout the area that staff has just outlined, is that correct?
Yes. They're excluded as the amendment to the motion.
They're excluded from any changes, they're captured under existing regulations as the amendment.
Can I just, I just want to clarify here, because we've got an amendment, and we've got a motion moving the amendments, and are you, have you done that yet? I just want to clarify, because we're discussing it, but I don't know that we've got it on the floor.
Yes.
So, the amendment is exclude CD1...
And CD2.
And CD2. Suite size on RS2 in a single-family in a residence will be 50% of the habitable above-grade floor space.
Yes.
And if there's a suite provided, it will be, an off-street parking will be required for that suite. And the issue of nonconforming, and Jim, is that in, and should be included in our bylaw, or excluded?
If you are directing that we either Swiss cheese or by reference grandfather in perpetuity, I don't know that this motion speaks to which you prefer, but it speaks to doing one of those two things. Just have to warn you that that piece of work is going to take staff several months, so you won't get this back in January.
Thank you. Okay, so by way of a motion, moving that as an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
All right. Seconded by Counselor Rick Fadden, thank you. So discussion. Counselor Jevatkov?
Just one other point, you know, part of our consideration has to be for the corporation of the city of Dawson Creek as well. And the taxes that are generated by a particular area will provide the maintenance for the future. The fewer people you have, the less taxes you're going to have. The other thing is, I'm still not familiar with the original bylaw, the motions, I'm probably quite a bit more confused than Jim Schute, so I just can't support any of this. But I'll tell you, I am willing to attend a special meeting of council to try and come up with a consensus of a bylaw that makes sense to cover all of these scenarios and variations, something that we could take to the public with the confidence of not being ridiculed.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Shane, hit her.
Shane? Sorry?
Didn't you put your hand up?
Oh, the mayor covered it, I just actually wanted to know what was all the...
Okay. Sure.
Just to review my notes, trying to get the summary at the bottom, there was a proposal before for changing terms, because I was looking at the council, and it was not captured in the bylaw.
Parking bylaw, I think, though, isn't it?
The parking...
No, there was a reference to some stuff that Mr. Modashaw had brought forward about changes in sizes, I don't know if you need that anymore, because now you're talking about a suite only and an RS2?
Yeah. Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Parslo?
Well, I think we should reflect a little bit of what Counselor Jevatkov just said about special meeting, but before that, just want to say, yeah, we've all probably talked to lots of people, and yes, we may walk in different circles, I think most of my conversations have been with long-term residents of the community, and some with realtors and so on. But one issue that was brought forward by the residential development committee that's not been referenced, and I feel honored bound to bring it up, because I had specific input from residents about the matter, and that's to do with the size, square footage of the ancillary buildings. I understand the current arrangement is 750, and it was requested by people, could that be increased to 780? Because many of our residents do drive trucks, and it was put forward that they would like that extra 30 square foot, it does allow them to walk completely around their trucks. So I don't know if Counselor Rogers would consider that as a friendly addition to his amendment or not.
Yes, I'd like to have this.
Thank you. So we're just adding the 780 to bylaw for the ancillary building from 750?
For graduates.
For graduates.
Now, the other question is about special meeting, and I'm just, I, where I'm at with this is, we're going to be providing some direction to staff to draft up a bylaw of whatever number, I've lost track of numbers, it's not, staff know what they're doing, they're going to be...
4204.
4204, okay. And we will have a meeting, council meeting or special meeting, to discuss that bylaw. I think we should have a goal of trying to get this bylaw passed in sufficient time so that builders and developers, et cetera, can get on with their work, knowing what the ground rules are. So I think we should have a goal of, if it takes special meetings, so be it, if it takes regular meetings, or special regular meetings, doesn't matter, that we have it all signed, sealed, passed by, and I'm just throwing out a date, by the second meeting in January, and we backfill in from there, special meeting dates or extra public meeting dates, so that we can get it. The subject to staff saying that this can be done, either legally or with resources you have.
Jim?
Again, I just have to tell you, if councils... Again, I just have to tell you, if council's direction is that we're going to specifically identify every property in this town that has a legal suite right now, I can't bring you back anything in January or February. It's March before I got, we're literally going to have to do a site survey every, we can't miss even one if we are going to address this grandfathering. Can't miss even one. Whether we're drawing a circle around it, in which case even the mapping is going to take weeks, or whether providing a list by reference, we can't miss even one.
Yeah. Counselor Parsl.
So regardless of my personal opinion about this Swiss cheesing, et cetera, et cetera, then I would rather us put those issues to one side at this moment so that we can get the rest of the bylaw done. And if council wishes to Swiss cheese this community, that's the council's decision, but we can, we got to allow staff to do the work because you have to. I understand you got to get that smack bang on, but I don't think we should be impeded from moving forward around the residential development action because this Swiss cheesing and grandfathering will, are not impediments to further building.
Counselor Schuman.
So we move forward with 4204, with the amendments. Without the Swiss cheese factor, we can then go back and Swiss cheese it, right?
Yeah.
If we agree to do it.
That's right. Counselor Wilber?
So...
Oh, sorry. Is that a question to administration?
Yeah.
So my expectation is you would proceed on that. Firstly, that requires an amendment to the amendment.
Yeah.
But my expectation is you would only proceed on that if property owners came forward who are in that situation asking you to do so. The bulk of the pushback you've had so far about non-conforming has come from the two areas that you now propose to exempt.
Okay.
So they wouldn't need grandfathering.
Okay. So we'll consider that. So, so who needs to amend the amendment, then?
So we got to, so are you making that as a motion, an amendment?
An amendment to the amendment.
So I've got a seconded for that. Counselor Parsl. Discussion. Counselor Javetkov.
Just some clarification. I, all of the developers had an agreement, and they were building houses and subdividing land and carrying on. So didn't the confusion or the concern or the, come with this? Isn't that what created the concern about carrying on building? I guess my point is that if we don't have a bylaw, they keep working under the terms of reference that they had before. So I keep hearing that we're delaying them and there's indecision. Hasn't the council created that?
Yes, in response to what you heard.
What if we go back to the drawing board, rescind all this stuff, go back to the drawing board and come up with something using their input, using all of the people that we've talked to, and I'm sure we've talked to thousands by the sounds of it. Personally, I've only talked to two, but I'm sure there's numbers there. So we've got all kinds of information. We could go back to the drawing board, using their information, using all of the anecdotal stuff that we've heard from our neighbors and relatives and friends, come up with something that we are comfortable with taking forward and proceed that way. That way, if we call the special meeting, whatever the legal advance notice is, we could probably have this all done here by the middle of January.
Counselor Rogers?
Then it'll have been a whole other year. 4204, after it had the two readings, there were two groups of people that actually came in at the public meeting and complained about it. Those two groups were the group from Woodlands and the group from up on 17th.
Western property.
Western property.
The investors.
Yes, sir.
The guys that are sneaking their neck out.
Yeah. And, and those were the two that had complained about it. And at that time, if, if council would have said, okay, we can take CD1 and CD2 and we'll just add it into this, they'd have been fine because that was their plan. And that's what we, that's what I've motioned for today, that we include CD1 and CD2 in that. And therefore, that makes those people happy. We're sticking, we're sticking to our word on what we had told them that when they started developing it, we said, this is what you can do, and they're, they're doing it. So if we include CD1 and CD2 back into 4204, I'm pretty sure that those people are going to be happy with what, with that because they're sticking to their plan. The people that aren't going to be happy with that, and there's a lot of them, are the people that, that said, well, why do they get to do what they're doing and we get to do what we're doing? And I just, I just look at that and I go, well, they got 50 acres up there that they're developing. They've allowed for so many properties to go in there. They've done the infrastructure. You can't be cutting back on that. And to those people that are going to be pissed off at me, I'm sorry about that, but this is the easiest way, I think, to get around this because if we were to turn around and sit and have to grandfather in all of, all of those properties that are in the CD1 and CD2 zone, that even makes more work for staff. I just, the way I look at it, you made a deal, stick to your deal. And we can, we can, we can change things as we move forward, but we got to get this sorted out today.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment to the amendment. Counselor Wilber?
Okay, so the amendment to the amendment is taking out the Swiss cheese clause.
We're existing, we're removing non-conforming.
You're creating non-conforming instead of trying to avoid creating non-conforming.
But we have the ability then to, after all, we've decided on this, to make another motion to set direction for, to start that work, to make them grandfathered.
We get to do whatever we want.
Okay.
Well, I actually, on, on that topic, though, Your Worship, I wouldn't direct that work just yet because this bylaw goes to public hearing, where you're going to hear from a lot of people.
Okay.
And you might change something, so, you know, I wouldn't want to do the work and then throw it away.
Yeah, I'm just trying to clear some of the fog here of all the conversation.
So that's the amendment to the amendment. The amendment, you want to hear that again?
Well, did the amendment to the amendment pass?
No, we're just, I just want to clarify because I think there's, are you all right with the amendment to the amendment?
Yep.
Got to vote on that one.
Are you ready for the question on the amendment to the amendment?
Yes.
Counselor Parsl.
No.
You're ready.
He's so ready.
All those in favor, opposed, it's carried. On the amendment, the amendment is that we will exclude CD1. We will restrict...
And CD2.
And CD2. We will restrict suite size to 50%. We will provide parking, off-street parking for any dwelling that has a suite. And we will increase ancillary building to 780 square feet. I think that's the four?
Oh, yeah.
Or five?
780.
And RS1 is single-family. RS2 carries suites with, or no suites and duplexes, and the suite size in a residence to 50%.
All right.
Jim?
I hate to complicate matters for you, but I think...
No, it's good.
Keeping in mind that 4243 was actually to bring wordings in so that the CT2 zone existed. The developers believe since there's no wording, they can do whatever they want, but our lawyers say because there's no wording, they can't do anything. So we had brought forward an amendment to bring CD2, which was accidentally omitted from the zoning bylaw, to bring that text forward. So if you could include in this, to also bring forward the wordings of the existing rules for CD2 so that they, they can exist to be excluded, if you know what I mean.
Thank you.
They could all be in one package.
All right. Thank you. So is that clear?
Yes.
Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Bylaw 4204.
As amended.
As amended. Are you ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. So now, so now we bring it back.
The wordings will come back for two readings at your first meeting in January.
Perfect.
With a recommendation for a public hearing. And can I get a sense, it seems to me that we might want to move that public hearing to the evening and into the Calvin Crook Center to accommodate...
So I was going to make that as a motion that we request administration to book the public hearing in the evening to allow it better access for people in our community. And we do it at the Calvin Crook Center, so we make sure we've got sufficient room.
I'll second.
Seconded, Wilber. Any discussion?
Yes.
Counselor Roger?
At that public meeting, will we be able to amend, if we need to, 4204?
Again, we get to do whatever we want.
If there's some things that come up.
Jim?
At a public hearing, you're listening, not talking.
Oh, okay.
So the way I envision this, first meeting in January, you get the wordings, and I assume by 4:03, you pass those wordings rather than having changed your mind through other conversations before that meeting. But otherwise, it's lost. But if it's passed, then the following, two weeks later, you have a regular meeting during the day. That evening, you have a public hearing. The next morning, you have a special meeting to consider adopting that bylaw.
Third reading and final.
But at third reading and final, you can amend the bylaw in any way you wish prior to adopting.
Does that help you?
So at that...
Thank you.
At that morning meeting, we would then have the hash-out session.
Well, you're going to have third and final at that after you've had first and second in the public hearing.
That's where, now, keeping in mind, that's where we failed every time so far. Three times, stuff have come for that third and final, and there's been no consensus, and we have moved to something else.
I'm pretty sure we're good known.
Very ambitious.
Good attitude.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Good gosh. Now can we have another break?
Yeah, let's have a break.
Just, I'm sorry, but we have one more issue.
Sure. Go ahead.
To speaking to Counselor Javetkov's point, to date, as you've been considering changes, you have said, we're going to hold any permits and abeyance while we decide. We're on blank page now, so I need to know, are we holding permits again until you decide?
So it would, I'm going to speak to that because I would, I would assume that we are because we're, our bylaw is speaking to removing suites from duplexes.
Yeah. So I need a motion for that.
Okay, so I want to make a motion that we hold any further permits allowing suites in a duplex until such time as we complete the bylaw. Because we've had that in place today. We've been holding them pending the bylaw adoption. Seconded. Counselor Parsl, discussion? Counselor Wilber?
I just have a question. So given the exemptions that are in the bylaw, how does that affect those people?
So they would still be able to get permits because there's no change contemplated that would deny them a permit. The rule of law is if there's a change under contemplation that would make that permit non-issuable, that permit can come back to council for, for consideration to issue or not.
So and then, and then also in the same case, for example, Mr. Rorson's development, he can continue on with what he's doing or not?
No, because it would affect him. His permits would be held.
He's captured.
Yeah. Will they come to you? Now, there's a seven-day grace period. So seven days from the moment you make this resolution, people can apply in any of those zones.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Javetkov?
I just want clarification. Who, who can get permits, who can't? Like, I, I like to know who the special people are and who are the...
Washed and the unwashed.
The guys in the back bench that can't get permits.
For seven days.
Interesting that we would even consider something like that.
Seven days, everybody's good, and at the end of seven days, it's locked for anybody outside of CD1, CD2.
Applying for a duplex in RS, or a suite in a duplex or a suite in an RS1 zone.
So how does that work if, if a permit application comes into City Hall and lo and behold, it's not dealt with for seven days, and on the eighth day, I guess they're just S.O.L.?
No, it's when they, it's when they're delivered here. And believe me, the developers know this. I can just tell you because of the new seven-day grace period that our acting planner, Devin Arrow, is gearing up.
Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. So we're going to take a five-minute break?
Wasn't that interesting yesterday? All of them recorded.
Okay, I think we're at like R1.
Seven. We're going to go back into our regular meeting and starting with 771 reports. And we have a report from the chief financial officer dealing with the statement of our financial condition.
Sure, she's not here. I would need that.
She isn't here right now.
There she comes.
There she is.
And we've got a recommendation way down here.
Moved by Counselor McFadden. That we receive it?
That's correct.
Counselor Schuman, seconded. I would just like to speak to this briefly, if I may. So this report, to me, really gives us some really solid, solid information in terms of the conditions of some of those key metrics, of financial metrics that are critical to our community in terms of understanding the implications of our debt to assets, the whole asset, or the asset management work that Shelley's been working on. There's a whole series of really critical information, I think, in there that was so informative to me to be able to understand some of those metrics in terms of what are important to our community. The one that really stuck out for me was, and I'm still not kind of convinced I get it completely, but when you look at our overall assets to debt at that 10% level, and I was at the B.C. Business Council meeting here about a month ago, and they talked about provincial debt to asset ratio at about 18%. And so to me, I think, and as it's pointed out in that report, that's a, it's a very good rating for us in terms of our factor, but I think the one thing that really stuck out to me was how critical that fair share component of revenue to our community is going to be in terms of continuing us on a path of financial stability for infrastructure and planning for infrastructure as we move forward. And without it, it completely changes, in my view, some of the components around that. So I really appreciate seeing that report in terms of what Shelley provided, and I hope that council really appreciate the amount of information that was contained in there because it was very helpful to me in terms of seeing that. Thank you for that.
You go.
Any further comments? Counselor Parsl?
Yes, sorry. It's great to have a CFO who can do this sort of work for us, so thank you, Shelley, very much. Thank you. I just, you know, Counselor Javetkov and Rogers, you know, a bit of a disadvantage. So I just want to highlight a couple of things, if I may, that stood out for me, as if I was a new member of council. And so I think number five, and this is in the bold print, council has committed to reducing the fair share fund in this use for operations by allocating any increases over and above the 2013 amount of capital. I think the item eight here, the recommended action plan is to move forward with phase two of the capital asset management plan, which looks at life cycle costs, maintenance costs, new inventory versus old inventory, as well as planned replacements and funding requirements into the future. My headspace on this is that that is a critical piece of work because it helps us understand a key element in our fiscal gap is understanding the replacement of our assets and the life expectancy and so on. That's right?
Absolutely. I think the important thing there is that the city provides the residents various services, and your infrastructure is necessary to support that service. So you have a responsibility as the steward of the community to ensure that that infrastructure is safe and functioning for future generations. It's key.
Right. So that work, we've, I asked Jim ahead of time, that recommended action plan is in fact, we've endorsed that, right?
Absolutely. Council approved it, and the only delay that we've had is staffing.
Absolutely.
And, but it's still on the books to move.
Absolutely. And number nine, reducing the city's vulnerability includes moving forward, reducing the amount of fair share allocated to operations and moving the fiscal gap work plan to the 2015 planning drive. Just making reference to these things, not only for... Just making reference to these things, not only for, where I strongly support the direction council's been taking, but the fact that we do have this strategic planning session coming up, and these are two, two or three things that maybe Counselor Rogers and Jevatkov may want to get very conversant with.
Thank you. Further comments? So, I appreciate the information, Shelley. Thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie. Thank you. Report from the CFO in regards to our community grant requests. Counselor McFadden?
Do I need to read the whole thing, Your Worship?
Yes, please.
All right. I will move that report, number ADM14-251, from the CFO regarding the 2015 community grant request be received. Further, that the $1,220 request from Dawson Creek Youth Center be denied because the group will receive a subsidized rate under the city's user fees and charges for publicly provided parks and recreation services policy. Further, that the $5,000 request from the D.C. Family Friendly Event and the $10,000 request from the Dawson Creek Seal Club be denied because they do not meet the grant's policy criteria. In addition, staff recommends that the grant's policy be updated in 2015, so the underlying objectives align with the city's user fees and charges for publicly provided parks and recreation services policy and any other current policies and principles.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seconded. Counselor Parslow, discussion? Counselor Jevatkov?
I just wondered how that $25,000 is going to be handled for the shelving. Is that going to be considered a grant, then?
No, it's a loan.
Through Your Worship, the first $25,000, which is in the existing project, will be considered part of the capital project already funded. The 20, if they go the extra $25,000 in bridge funding, that is a loan, it's going to be, it's going to be an unsecured asset to you, like the, there's going to be a balancing asset, which is the repayment. So, Shelley's going to have to, Shelley's going to have to account for that properly, but it won't be considered a grant. So, neither one of those two would be considered a grant.
Thank you. Further discussion? The component to me, and the second piece of this recommendation around reviewing and getting some recommendations back on our grants policy, is the underlying objective of the grants policy, kind of in my own perspective, would be that we have a grants policy that we're trying to assist community groups and organizations that need some assistance in delivering programs or services. And the grants policy that we have today seems to be restricting that, because we've dropped from $100,000 or $120,000 of grant allocation six or seven years ago to $10,000 or $15,000 or zero. And so, I'm not questioning that aspect of it, but we should, to me, the recommendation of looking at that grant policy to say, is it achieving or accomplishing the result that we hoped it would do? Because if we're not allocating anything under the grants policy because nobody qualifies, then either why do we have the policy, or what is the objective of the policy that we hope it to deliver? And so, I'm not questioning the financial component of it, of whether it's, whether we're allocating dough or not, just that if we have a policy, it should be meeting the needs of our community groups. But if it isn't, then let's revisit that from the perspective of saying, if it isn't meeting the needs of the objectives that we have as a policy, then let's scrap it. Let's just get rid of the grant. And/or, let's revisit the policy to say, what is it we hope to accomplish and deliver? Because to me, I haven't reviewed the policy, and I'm going to fess up to that now, but we should look at it from the perspective of saying, it obviously isn't doing what we hope, because it's not, we're not delivering any dough. And if that was the objective to help financially groups, and we're not, then the policy isn't meeting the needs to, and that's, I'm just making that leap. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so, I look at it a little bit differently. We put in a policy with certain criteria, and in my mind, it was so that, I mean, you look back at how much money was handed out over the years, and I know if we went further back, you probably would find bigger numbers handed out in these grants. And I think that part of the reason that this policy happened was so that, you know, we're not handing money to people with big fat bank accounts, and we're not being the first stop on their list of donors. Why go out and fundraise if you can just go to the city, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? So, yeah, maybe we're not handing out a lot of money, but maybe there's a reason for that.
Well, and so, that's my point, in terms of just saying, if we have a policy that we're hoping to accomplish, and it delivers some results to assist community groups, and if we're not delivering any dough, then why have the policy, I guess is my question. Counselor Jevatkov, first?
I think that's an excellent point. If you went back further before 2007, you'd probably see bigger amounts for grants. But to me, and I don't know if my recollection is accurate, but I connect that policy to when we started getting fair share. It was like a windfall, and we became the first stop for money. So, people, rather than fundraise, it was easier just to draft up a letter, give it to one of the counselors to bring to council, and lo and behold, you had a whole bunch of money.
Yeah.
And, I mean, there's lots of organizations benefited from that, but it does detract from the fundraising aspect. And, you know, I think that's a good point, and the fee for service, on the other hand, to me, is a legitimate way of dealing with things like Rotary Lake, where we have people running it, or a building where we're paying utilities, or, you know, that kind of thing. So, you know, maybe that's a discussion that needs to take place.
Yeah, I just, for me, it's just this whole issue of the policy. If it's not meeting what we had hoped to, an objective, if the objective was we want to reduce and end spending money on grants, then the policy is delivering. But if it has an objective in some respect, then let's just review that. In my view, that's kind of, because we're not giving any dough for anything. And so, and if that's the objective, then why have the policy? Just say, no, we don't give out any dough for any grant. Counselor Wilbur?
Oh, I just wanted to add to what both Counselor Jevatkov and Counselor Schuman said. The other thing that, and we have been doing that, and is the communication to these groups that you need to apply ahead of time, not after the fact. And so, that change and the dynamics has changed, and some groups have come in in the appropriate time and been able to fit the criteria, and they've been given funding. But if they don't, they don't. And so, we do, we always, every year, seem to have these groups that kind of stagger in afterwards, asking for money for things that have already taken place, when actually they should have followed through on the process. So, I think part of that is we just keep that communication up with our groups, saying, you know, here's the timeline, here's the criteria. If they fit, they can apply, and if they don't, they don't. I mean, it's stopping that first-stop shop with the city is, I guess, what I'm getting at.
Shelley, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, if you look at it, the policy was drafted in 2006, and that was approximately nine years ago, 2010. So, yes, it's thousands of changes, the objectives, council's objectives might have changed. Plus, in that 10-year period, we've updated a number of the policies and principles for the whole financial line that the city uses. So, I truly believe it's time to actually look at the underlying objectives and principles of what a community grant's policy should do, in light of everything else that the city is under.
Sure. Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that at all. Absolutely think we should look at it, but I was just sort of commenting to you on your comments. And we certainly have given money over the years. It's not like we're not, every year, it's not. And, I mean, they do stagger in, and we do end up giving money at some point along the road, and it's not like this $50 grand is going nowhere every year. But I totally support looking at it and revisiting it.
And that was just my point, right, in terms of what's the objective of the policy? Is it delivering what we had hoped and anticipated it would? And if it is, great. If it isn't, then we should just revisit. Counselor Parslow?
Absolutely. I think, just looking at the status of our grant, you know, I think we're, a number of other municipal governments I know of who would envy our position. They are trapped into a thing that would just give them all sorts of problems if they tried to prune it. These grants have become in other communities a perpetual thing, and it's become part of the culture of the place. I think of Fort St. John, Jimmy knows the exact figures there, but theirs, they, their counselors always talk about their big problem, about how much money goes out for grants. So, I think it's always good to revisit and refresh, but I kind of like what we have right now.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
No. Here, I'll get over there. So, yeah, anybody else have anything to add? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Report number 73, we have report number 14257, Director of Corporate Administration regarding our gallery lease agreement. Counselor Parslow?
Move the report number 14-257, re-art gallery lease agreement, South Peace Art Society be received. Further, that the city of Dawson Creek renewed the lease agreement with the South Peace Art Society for the elevator annex and elevator office in exchange for the operation of the Dawson Creek Art Gallery for a five-year term, beginning February the 5th, 2014, at a cost of $1 per term.
Thank you. Do I have a second, or Counselor Schuman, discussion? Is that going to be cash? Oh, sorry, Counselor Jevatkov?
Cash.
I just wondered about the consistency of this policy, like, is this how all of the societies are handled in the city, or, so that's one question. The other one is, so this, it costs money for the insurance. How much staff time is allocated towards administering this policy, like, as far as doing inspections or that type of thing, for the purposes of the insurance?
Thank you, Jim.
Through Your Worship, so a couple of points there. The South Peace Art Society gets a fee for service from us to run the facilities, and so, in the same way that Miles Zero Rotary Park Society gets a fee for service. So, in those cases, then, yes, it is the common thing for us to lease them the property for a dollar. For those that are not in the fee-for-service category, no, then there is a, as you know in your fees and services policy, there is a look at the market value, or the market rate for rental, and then the discounts applied for youth, et cetera. So, those who are on fee-for-service, yes, this is the common way of dealing with them. Secondly, yes, there is staff time involved in the preparation of the lists for insurance purposes, for the permanent collection. Can't say how much time that amounts to, but Janet Loizell spends a period of her time every time the insurance tender comes up, doing all of that work. And it can be a significant block of time, but I doubt that the amount dedicated to this particular facility is a very large part of that bigger block.
Thank you. Counselor Jevatkov?
So, I guess my concern is that the difference there between $200 and some dollars for insurance and $1,200, would that, would the staff time more than compensate for that, or is that, like, just how do the numbers work there?
Haven't actually looked at that, Your Worship, but it would take a lot of Janet's hours to add up to $1,000.
Thank you. Any further, Counselor Rogers?
Yeah, I might just add that we just spent that just talking about.
Really?
Further questions? Further comments?
I didn't get the...
I didn't either.
We just spent a grand with everybody sitting in this room talking about that.
It takes, it takes less time to add up to $1,000 when you're talking about my hourly rate than when you're talking about Janet's.
There you go. All right.
Mine doesn't even add up to folding money, it's just jingly.
We know when you're...
Question, all those in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie. Thank you. It's already been a long day. Report number 74, report number 14258, the Deputy Chief Financial Officer Online Home Owner Grant Application. Counselor Schuman?
I'd move that report number 14258 from the Deputy Chief Financial Officer regarding online homeowner grant agreement. The city of Langford renewal be received. Further, that administration be authorized to renew the agreement with the city of Langford for a five-year term, beginning May 1st, 2014, with an annual fee of $1,500.
Thank you. Seconded. Counselor McFadden, discussion? Counselor Wilbur?
So, is this like a lease agreement, well, through Your Worship, to staff? Is this like a lease agreement to use their software?
Yes, software.
Is that what it is?
And it includes tech support as well.
Okay.
Yeah, amazing that a community develops their own software and develops their own program to be able to deliver a service, and got the patent on it, then everybody now benefits from that innovative approach to services, and for us to be able to have it for a minimal amount of money, really. Talking about if you had to develop it your own.
So...
Counselor Jevatkov?
Is this obvious that somewhere where I can press a button and use that thing? Because I don't think I'm aware of it. I think I've been doing it the old way.
Yes, and it's reference on the notices as well, is it not?
Yes, it is. Yes, and if you need assistance, I'm sure there's...
Oh, so that means you have to read those notices.
Yes. That's why we put them in there.
Pretty much, everybody reads the figure on those notices, but the other wordings, they're pretty good, too.
Rather than doing it the old way.
We are happy that Paul just writes a check.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie. Thank you. Report 75, we have a report number 14253 from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development regarding our work program for the industrial lands planning workshop. Counselor Parslow?
I move that report number 14-253, from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, re-industrial lands planning workshop be received. Further, council approve the work plan as presented.
Thank you. Seconded. Counselor McFadden, discussion? Counselor Jevatkov?
I see there's a provision here to hire a consultant, and I'm absolutely opposed to that. You know, this industrial land has been here since Alberta, Northern Alberta Railways came into town, and to start replanning it or planning it at this point, I think, is a waste of money, especially if you have to hire a consultant.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
Well, as I think you know, staff has been trying to hire a planner for six months or more?
Eight, no.
Eight months. So, there've been a couple of projects that need, require that expertise that we've had to contract out, that might ordinarily be, I'm not saying all of it would have been done by a city planner, but certain parts of it might well have been facilitated.
All of this project would have been done by a city planner.
They come and hand you that again.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Rogers?
Okay, I'm just struggling with this a little bit. The only reason is, I just need some help here for a second. I didn't get my agenda until after 3:00 on Friday, so I had a few questions that I wanted to ask about other stuff. But can somebody explain to me what they want to develop?
So...
Why do we want to hire somebody to, why do we want to hire urban systems we get with?
So, the question came before council in regards to the proposed uses for the land, and so, council instructed administration to go to a public charrette, a public process to engage the community in terms of, is and are the proposed uses under that zoning still appropriate today, and engage the community in that conversation. We've never had a development permit proposed and brought forward to council, so there isn't anything in front of council that they are proposing to build. There's been speculation that it's going to be this kind of a facility or that, but there is nothing in front of council. But the issue that council would be faced with is if a development permit was filed for, then council would not be in a position then to stop it. And so, that was council's direction to administration, to put a public process together, so that we can engage the community and have that conversation about what is the views of the appropriate uses for that zoning. Have I got that right, Jim?
Yes, you do. This is a direction from council. You wanted to see the work plan and the costs. You wanted to see the work plan and the costs, so here are the work, is the work plan and the costs.
Councillor Rogers?
And this is land that the city does know?
Yeah, I know it's CN property, along the railway, and they're right now developing it for a siding, we understand, but as I say, we have no, we've never had a development permit filed, but council wanted to proceed with it because we got a fair amount of public feedback in terms of what was being proposed. So that's what drove it to this stage today.
Can I ask, both, could be proposed?
No.
We have no, there's been nothing proposed.
If we don't know what's going to be proposed in that area, and the land isn't ours, but we want to spend $28,000 to have somebody tell us what to do with it?
So now we're going to engage the community in terms of understanding what could be utilized for in that zoning, and then for council to decide then if they want to make some amendments to that particular use as it applies to that zoning. That, so if you said, the speculation was that it was going to be a frac sand handling facility, is that a proposed use that we want to see continue within that particular zoning? And so that's the engagement process that we're going to go through, is to engage the community, to have that conversation and discussion, to, to guide council in terms of saying, okay, is that something we want to change? Or no, we're happy with that, we're going to proceed with it. But we want it, council wanted to ensure that we engaged then, move forward with that engagement with the community. So that's, we don't have the capacity within a plant, the planning facility, so that results in us hiring outside help to do that.
Councillor Parslow?
Yes, to further for Councillor Rogers' edification of that, this process was basically also required, is required legally in a sense, because with the, unless we had taken the action we had, we would have very little latitude in what happens in the, this area adjacent to our downtown core. So we have to stay objective, we have to be fact-based, but we also need to engage the public in a process, so we have that as part of our data. But we have to be open as to what our determination is. Some people have already determined that nothing changes, but council has to be objective about it through the process that we could adopt.
Councillor Jevetkov?
You know, the area's already zoned, there's a list of things that can be done in there. I, you know, in light of this fiscal gap, I just find that it's so easy to ignore it. And, well, you know, somebody had a, a concern, they don't know what they're concerned about because we've had no proposals, but let's spend $28,000. Oh, there's a fiscal gap? Well, next time, we'll deal with the fiscal gap next time. Like, I just don't get it. You know, there's got to be some, to me, the thing is zoned, it's got a list, I think it was rezoned a few years ago, because I believe when I was on council, it was heavy industrial, which meant that you could put a sawmill in that location. Now it appears that it's light industrial, so sawmills are out of the question. How, how many times do you revisit this, and how much money do you spend on it?
Thank you. Councillor Schuman?
One of our strategic priorities is engaging the community on things that are important to them, and the community came forward and let us know that what happens in that area is important to them, and I think that that's also one of the reasons that we went down this path. Not just, I mean, big reason was so that, you know, we're prepared in case there's something comes forward that, whatever, but it's also about engaging the community, and that's what we're doing here.
Councillor Wilber?
I just want to, because I was opposed to it from the beginning, so just let me put my two cents in. I think actually it wasn't a rash of the community that came forward, I think certain proponents came forward and gave us written letters as to why they would like it looked at, so I just want to be clear on that, that it wasn't a rash of, we, some people may have talked to people, I don't know, but we did receive letters from certain proponents that thought it would affect them and their businesses.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Jevetkov?
I'd be interested in seeing the complaints. Are they on file somewhere, or are they recorded in minutes?
Yeah, we'll have copies of, sorry, Jim, go ahead.
Through your worship. There's no blank page. You don't start over when a new councillor or a new councillor is elected. The motion that was passed is council direct staff to prepare an amendment to the M2 regulation, it's still heavy industrial. To prohibit sand storage uses in the area adjacent to CN railway between 8th Street and 15th Street, further that staff be directed to arrange a community charrette, to engage members of the public in the determination of appropriate land uses in this zone, and further that staff report to council with respect to any building or development permit applications related to sand storage in respect of the area adjacent to CN railway between 8th Street and 15th Street during the preparation of the zoning amendment by law to enable council to consider exercising its power under section 929 of the Law of Government. So if a councillor wishes to move reconsideration of that motion, that would be fine, but there's absolutely no point wasting time discussing it if you're not going to reconsider that motion.
Right. Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie, thank you.
Report number 76, we have a report from Deputy Director of Corporate Administration regarding a city land sale list, 10225 10th Street. Councillor Parslow?
Move the report number 14-259 from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration, re-city land sale list, 10225-10th Street be received. Further, the council directs staff to place 10225 10th Street on the city land sale list designated reserve at the assessed value of $83,600.
Thank you. Seconded, Councillor Wilber, discussion? Councillor Wilber?
Is this the old movie gallery property?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so we're putting it on at assessed value, but not at the value, we have the, some additional costs and charges in there, Jim, that we pay...
Are you going to take 80 grand bath on this thing if you're lucky enough to sell it?
Yeah. As a result, Councillor Jevetkov?
I think that we should include all of our costs, because if we get a proposal that gives us some leverage, I mean, if we have $300,000 against that property, and somebody comes into, with an interest in developing it, we can give them, give them a deal on it. Like, according to the policy that I'm familiar with from before, if they said, okay, we're going to develop it by this date, we could say, okay, if you do, we'll refund you $250,000 or whatever.
So on that topic of the blank page thing, that policy was rescinded? Because development was so vibrant, the council didn't believe they needed to provide those, those incentives anymore, so that policy you're referring to doesn't exist anymore.
So now we're back to, I promise I'll do it, and hope they do?
Now we're back to you sell the land and they do what they do.
Oh. So there's no, there's no incentives?
No.
Okay.
Councillor Rogers?
Through your worship, I, why didn't the, like, this is the, is this the cleanup cost for...
Demolition and cleanup.
Then why did the city do it? Don't they have insurance for that? Didn't that business have an insurance company that would take care of all that? So why would the city be on the hook for that?
The insurance company declined coverage. The owner is resident in the US now and refused to demolish the building. Council resolved to demolish it under the unsafe erections bylaw and try to recover the cost. So you demolished it, you did not get cost recovery. The, this property went to, it kept being put to taxes, the uncollected amount, and then nobody bid on it at tax sale, and it became yours.
Further comments? Further questions?
I just wondered if Councillor Wilber wanted a German for a minute.
No, she's good. Further, further comments? Further discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor?
Sorry, I should have called it Dangerous Buildings Bylaw.
It's okay. I admire the very storied...
See, the mayor's just trying to forge ahead, right?
Oh, dear.
Report from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding our library flooring tender.
She's not allowed to look at me.
Councillor Schuman?
I move that report number 14252 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding the library flooring tender be received. Further, the council award tender 201437, Two Hegy Construction Limited for the lump sum bid of $139,200 plus additional taxes. Should I put something in there about the leftover going to shelving?
No, you've already made the arrangements. This is just the award of the tender.
Thank you. So, seconded, Councillor McFadden, discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie, thank you. That was close. Sorry?
Is there an opposition?
No.
No.
Jesus.
Sewer rates and, uh, sorry, bylaws, 8-1.
Just teasing McFadden.
No, I was actually, it was Councillor Jevetkov was almost voting to get something that he meant to.
He didn't make his hand down.
You're getting Ray Houston there. Councillor Parslow?
I move the report number 14-231 from the Chief Financial Officer be received. Further, sewer rates and regulations amendment by law 4245, 2014, be provided for first three readings.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Actually, I think that's an error. Isn't this for adoption?
That was a previously received report, just put on for adoption.
This for adoption?
Yeah, that was just for information. Put on for adoption.
Excuse me? For adoption?
Yeah. Move for adoption? Councillor Parslow, seconded, Councillor Schuman, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie. We've dealt with 8-2, we've got 8.3.
There's a kid's game just like this, you know?
Yeah.
Whack-a-mole. Report number 14255 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding smoking regulation bylaw number 4240. And is it appropriate now to consider the delegation, or do I do that?
No, this is the time to consider it.
Okay, perfect. Move, sorry, Councillor Wilber?
No, I was speaking, I was going to speak...
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm not actually in favor of amending it. I think that it affects one business, maybe two. One has opted in to allow families, so obviously they're not going to have smoking because they can't. Two, the other one has so far not opted in, and they do already have signage up saying you have to be 19 to be on the deck, and I think with all the feedback we received, that was a strong message across the board, even from people who wanted the bylaw put in, they thought that there should be, made those allowances for our licensed establishments. So in that, I mean pubs and bars, so I'm not prepared to make that amendment, that was suggested.
Okay, so I'm...
By the delegation. Are you all right with the ones that are in the report?
Yes, yeah.
So I'm looking for then...
I have a question.
Councillor Schuman?
This business of the e-cigarettes. We're putting in there now that the e-cigarettes, so tobacco that's not actually creating any emissions, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna add that to the list of things that aren't allowed? How does everyone feel about that? I, I, I kind of think we don't need to get into that, but...
Councillor Parslow?
Well, I support the inclusion of e-cigarettes based upon the literature that I have read and some documentaries, that this is just a step towards smoking other products, so we're, we're here trying to incorporate healthy habits, as I see a big part of this in education, and one leads to the other. So that's why other municipalities, some, like Vancouver, has included e-cigarettes in their bylaws.
Thank you. Councillor Schum, Wilber?
Well, I, I don't know. I, I don't agree with Councillor Parslow, but I mean, so, I'm just saying in the same concept, then maybe we could say that so are the Popeye candy cigarettes that you get handed out at Halloween, or that actually were at the public session that we had for the no smoking bylaw, they actually gave those out. So I mean, we could also say by giving kids Popeye candy sticks that look like cigarettes, we're, we're doing that as well. I mean, do we ban patches?
Oh, please don't.
Well, I'm just saying, it's like, you know, really, we're dealing with secondhand smoke here, we have, we've put a bylaw forward, I think we are very receptive to the public input, and I think we should stick with that plan.
Need a motion? Councillor McFadden?
I agree with Councillor Wilber, I won't be supporting the recommendation.
Need a motion?
I'm making a motion with what I said.
Councillor Wilber? That we...
Scrap that.
That we scrap those amendments and we can...
Proceed with third reading?
Is that what we're doing? Please help me out right now.
We've got first and second, Brenda?
The motion is to just remove the e-cigarettes portion, but keep all the other recommendations?
And we're not adding the recommendations that were put forward by the delegation, right? Yes. Okay.
Just remove the e-cigarettes.
Do you have that? Tyler, are you all right?
Sure.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Schuman, discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie, thank you. Report 8-4, we have a report number 14246 from the Chief Financial Officer regarding our parkland reserve fund bylaw number 4248, 2014. Moved by Councillor Schuman. Seconded, Councillor McFadden?
I'm waiting for it to come up.
It's just that little...
Councillor Jevetkov?
This is where the money goes in to acquire new parklands?
That's correct. Through your worship, that's correct.
So, so is that money available to do improvements on parklands?
No. No, it's, the developer puts it up as an option to putting up actual land, and so the money goes into a reserve, except in this case, we didn't put it into the reserve, that's why you have the report in front of you. But notionally, we're supposed to put it into a reserve and use that to acquire parklands. So that's the purpose of the reserve, is to acquire parklands?
So how big is the reserve now?
Through your worship, that was the first contribution, so $9,000.
Well, except it's not in there. It's going.
Actually, it was, sorry, yeah. The money was put aside, but we never had a bylaw in place to regulate what it can be used for in the future. We're just basically tidying up.
Councillor Jevetkov?
So is there a way to modify the reserve interpretation to include park improvements to parks?
Through your worship, no, there isn't. This is, this is in accordance with the...
Regulation.
Regulation of the community charter.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie, thank you.
You're getting there.
Sorry, did somebody vote against that? I didn't look. No? I don't think so.
I think Paul voted for that, didn't you?
No, he voted in favor.
I don't vote against everything.
I was going to say. It just appears that way.
Depends on when his hand goes up, is how he's getting recorded.
Looks like...
No, that's the second thing he's voted for this year.
Report number...
I'm going to vote in favor of the next one, too.
8-5, report number 14248 from the Chief Financial Officer, our 2015 Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw. Moved by...
Let Paul move it.
Moved by Councillor Jevetkov.
I'll move that one.
Seconded by Councillor McFadden, discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie, thank you. 8-6 is report number 14239 from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development regarding zoning amendment by law number 4246. Councillor Schuman?
Oh, please, please let me do this one. Because, well, I got to get to it now. I really would like it.
You're dilly-dallying, moving on to somebody else.
The report number, I move that report number 14239 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding zoning amendment 1419 by law number 4246, 2014 be reserved, received. by law number four two four six, twenty fourteen be reserved, received, further that zoning amendment fourteen nineteen by law four two four six, twenty fourteen proposing to rezone a portion of the building as shown in figure one located at eleven hundred Alaska Avenue from C two commercial general zone to C five commercial neighborhood pub zone to be given first and second reading, and further that stat be directed to publish the required notice for a formal public hearing.
Thank you. Seconded, Councilor Jevetkov, discussion? Ready for the question, all in favor? Opposed? It's carried, thank you.
Just for information, your worship, this is, uh, frequently used in other communities, but not very often here, that you're rezoning parts of a building to different zones. It's a, it's an authority you have in the act, but you haven't used here previously, so it's kind of a watershed moment.
Thank you. Eight point seven, we have report number one four two five zero from the Director of Infrastructure Sustainable Development regarding by law four two five zero for rezoning Southwest Quarter of Section twenty-three at Adante Holdings.
This is like a switcheroo. Nobody's gonna move it, I'll move it.
So moved by Councilor Schuman, seconded, Councilor Wilbur, discussion? Councilor Jevetkov, then.
Is this land out of the ALR?
Uh, through your worship, yes, it is out of the ALR.
Councilor McFadden?
Uh, this one kinda concerns me, because here we are, we're moving land from RS one to RS, hey?
No.
Or RM, yeah. It makes me nervous that we're getting back into what we've got up on the North Hill.
We're moving, we're moving the location, we're not moving the zoning?
You're slightly upsizing the size.
Am I?
Yeah, you're downsizing RS one and upgrading the RS two.
But you are moving the location of it.
As well.
So, um, just in the event that you will be looking for some area of controversy to engage you after you're done with the Residential Development Committee, we thought we'd get something on the table for you, because.
That's exactly.
At the moment, the higher density is in the middle of the undeveloped property. The theory there is that no one will buy the RS one property without knowing that a neighbor to them is going to be the higher density. So people will know upfront. Moving it down means that folks who may have purchased their homes or developed their properties believing that surrounding them would be RS one, it would now be RM one, allowing row housing, basically. So you would be, um, changing the playing field by this rezoning, which has proved to be, uh, such a vibrant area of conversation in the Residential Development Committee, that it's just good that you have another similar issue to deal with.
Councilor Schuman?
I was just gonna say that it, to me, it appears like we're gonna move that RM one sort of next to more of the same.
No.
Making, like, we're putting this right here, down here, right? So isn't that the same?
Square in the middle, right by.
To over here.
Yeah, to the bottom.
Right? Is it into that little peninsula, or over here somewhere?
The map in the bylaw is, we're showing the.
Well, it's, it is a bit difficult to read.
So over here?
The peninsula.
It's the reason why you didn't get your agenda until three o'clock on Friday, was trying to upload these freaking maps.
Okay, for this, alright.
Where is that?
The third click. Where is this? Right up in the northeast corner of town. Right beside, um.
Oh, this is.
So the.
To the east.
Land.
Ted Sandu, Curtis, Wayne Dolan in that.
Yeah.
So it's not putting it next to.
Not right now it is, but it's going to be a few.
It is.
This is currently.
So they wanna take and change.
This is going to be moved up.
Yeah.
Here, Willie, there, so if you click on your third icon.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Your third paper clip, it'll bring this map up.
Oh, see, I was thinking it was going over here, which was next to that anyways. But I'm fine with that.
Counselor Parslow?
Well, this again is, uh, an example of, you know, people make major investments in their property, and, uh, we then change, allow, enabling a change that might negatively impact their, their investment. And I, I don't see any reason why we should accommodate this adjustment. Um, I don't know if the people who, I don't know the history, and maybe staff does, but if we look at the residents that border on this property, some of those homes are fairly old, others are quite new. Did they invest there with the notion that their neighbors would be single-family dwellings? As it was originally in, um, when taken out of the ALR, or did they know that there was a possibility of row houses abutting onto their property line? I, uh, so I, I just don't think I can support this change.
I think the folks at Twenty First Street would have a conversation about that with us.
So the recommendation in front of you is to take it to public hearing and find out what the view of those people are. Uh, but the recommendation also is to get an updated servicing and traffic study, uh, because the servicing study is outdated versus our current configurations, and the traffic study, uh, needs to address, uh, the difference, to put the density onto that one connector street as opposed to where it was going to be before. So, uh, the recommendation in the report is you take it to two readings after you have a servicing feasibility study and a traffic study.
Thank you. Council, so, Councilor Wilbur, did you have your hand up?
Oh, I, I was just gonna say in reference to people living where they do and then making assumptions of what will or will not be built around them. I have a lovely field behind my house, and the church sold it, and now they can build an apartment building, and yay, I'm gonna have more kids in my neighborhood. I mean, it's all perspective, but I'm thinking where this change is, where they wanna put, um, the RM one, I, I believe somewhere in that area, there is duplexes, like CMHC housing or affordable housing along there. Is that, am I wrong in that?
I believe, I think they're further north.
Are they? Okay.
This one's ours, too.
I need to give you a landmark.
I think they're further north up.
Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, and I feel that same way, like, just because you bought a piece of property, and there wasn't something there, and then somebody changes their mind and puts something there, I mean, I had a lovely view before somebody built a house across the street from me, and it could have been a duplex even, wasn't, but, I mean, I think if you don't want anything built next to you ever, there's places for that, maybe. I, I don't know.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councilor Jevetkov?
Um, so the blue area, what is that gonna end up as, if we pass this motion?
Well, if you pass this motion, all you're doing is taking it to public hearing after we get the, um, proper studies, but, um, if you, it subsequently carried through to rezoning, it'll go from RS one, which I'm thinking may soon be a zone in which you can't have suites, um, to RM one, which allows duplex, fourplex, sixplex, so row housing, basically, but again, I believe that will be without suites, depending on what you do with your other process.
Yeah.
So, isn't that Curtis York's and Sandu's property?
Yes, yes.
Well, so is that appropriate to dump some condos next to them? I don't know. I, I guess I'm just thinking, well, your place up there, if you had condos across the street from you.
I've got duplexes, so.
Um, your worship?
Yeah, oh, sorry, Councilor Wilbur?
I'm just gonna say, I mean, regardless of who lives there, um, they could then, I guess, attempt to buy that property to, you know, like, I mean, seriously, they built there, there's a field behind them that was sold for development, um, your neighborhood just got bigger, are, we, we can't have a segregated community, that's how you end up with slums.
Counselor Rogers first?
It was, it was, just to make sure I'm talking right, it was already zoned RS one.
Yes.
It is at this one.
With the center, with the center being RM one, though, right? Yeah.
So why do we wanna change that?
They, we don't.
We don't, they're asking.
The developer.
Why does the developer wanna change it, sorry?
That's right.
The row houses.
Well, I don't think that, I don't think we can make that assumption. I think they need to put.
The process is, they don't have to tell us why they want to do it, they just tell us they wish to do it.
And we consider the, the impacts of that zoning request on all of the factors that we have, and have done in the past.
They might show up, so they tell us why.
If this goes forward, then it really only goes to public hearing, and the public has the opportunity to come forward and say, yes, I like it, or no, I don't, and give us their reasons why. We're not actually saying, we're not actually rezoning it, right?
Right, we're bringing this rezoning request forward to first and second reading, and then a public.
Then a public hearing.
Counselor Schuman?
And, um, the studies that we're going to do may make it more attractive or less attractive to us to do that, and the proponents may show up at the public hearing to tell us why they are considering that.
Yes, I believe, um, the concept that they've spoken to staff about is a gated seniors community.
I thought I heard that somewhere.
But, again, I will caution all of you that promises made in a rezoning application are the same as promises made in a campaign, which is to say they're non-binding.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna add one other piece. This is one of, we talk about, you know, we went through all the other things that we've gone through today on our residential development. This is one of the few, very few locations and pieces of property that we have as RS one specifically in our community. There's a little bit up in Camarillo, there's this, and there's another slice over by the co-op. But other than that, this is RS one and the only RS one we have. So the planning for it in terms of how and what they do are really significant components, I think, for them and for us, so, um, but I like the idea of having the, I, I, when I looked at it, I couldn't believe that we had that four point three hectares right in the middle of all that RS one, and it makes it tough to develop in that regard, to me. So it makes sense for us to have that community public hearing process.
Yeah.
Counselor Parslow, you had your hand up?
No, I decided.
Thank you. Counselor Wilbur first, then Jevetkov?
I, I'm just, it just comes to mind when we talk about public hearing, that, um, maybe we should also look at having this one, um, in the evening, so that people can attend and come forward. I think it's something we have to look at, of having those in the evening and then having the discussion the next morning.
That's been a great point to me in terms of this process. Counselor Jevetkov?
Um, this just seems to me like, uh, a situation where you may prefer to blend in, you know, the single-family houses, and then as you, you know, get into an area further away, you know, you put in apartments or fourplexes or eightplexes or whatever, but, you know, that's just my personal, like, some rich people don't like to live next door to poor people.
They can move to the country.
Others, other rich people like to move next door to poor people. Some people move to the country where they're out of the way, and, and there's no, uh, opportunity for somebody to build next to them, but this year just seems to me like it's one of those planning issues that.
Well, I think it's an investment. The developer, the investor is coming into our community about eighty acres or eighty-five acres, and they're looking to invest it and develop it on behalf of our community, and that's a great thing, so. Counselor Schuman first, and then Rogers?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, great points about the rich and the poor people, but, in the end, we don't rezone it, and, and so it stays RS one. Well, then those poor rich people along that, there, along the top there, they're gonna have to live next to those poor people, too, like.
Part of the, part of the public hearing process.
Exactly.
Counselor Rogers?
Yeah, you did touch on, there is hardly any RS one in town, um, and I looked at, I've, I've talked to people, and they said that I, it's been indicated to me that they would like to have a neighborhood where there is only RS one. So that means there's no suites, so there would be less traffic. It doesn't go with what everybody's been talking about, like densification and everything else, but, uh, RS one neighborhoods, there are people that are looking for that, and in this town right now, there isn't, they don't have that option. There's one cul-de-sac where they do have that option, and that's it.
So I know that this, I have met with this particular purchaser, um, as they were exploring the purchase and the option, and have met with them a couple times through the Realtor, and they are keen about developing, uh, single-family residential, and so to me, it's a great opportunity for us to engage in the conversation and discussion, uh, in the public hearing process to get the feedback, and hopefully they're there and present us with the options and the alternatives that they're gonna provide for that development, and, uh, we can then make a decision. And so this is the, uh, opportunity for us to, uh, move that process forward, to engage investment in our community.
Counselor Wilbur?
Well, and I, I just wanna add to that, I want, I wanna say a couple things, but I wanna add to that, at least by doing it this way, we're getting the public input ahead of time and not gonna be backtracking. But the other thing I wanna add, 'cause I really don't believe in segregated communities, is that regardless of the size of your bank account or the vehicle you drive, at the end of the day, our graves are the same bloody size.
Thanks. As my grandson says, thanks.
Wow, Merry Christmas.
Counselor, uh, McFadden?
Well, if the developers all drunk-hold and fired up over single-family, what does you, what need a zoning change for?
He just wants to move.
He just wants to move.
The property from the center of it.
That's what he says, yeah.
Well, you have to, you have to look at that map, it's pretty clear that if you move the RM down there, the RM could be developed first. I think you'd be wise to assume that's the plan.
Yeah.
Uh, if the plan was to develop residential RS one first, it could be done in the existing plan.
Exactly.
This is the, um, to get to the RM, as it's now situated, you'd have to build the roads and water lines all the way to the middle of the property.
Yeah.
I, I, I think you should assume that the RM one will go first, if you change it to that location.
Counselor Parslow?
Well, the point about RS one, this scheme reduces the RS one area by, by just over hectare.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's defeated. And, uh, so, so, so eight eight, uh, report number, sorry? Sure. So in favor was Schuman, Wilbur, Bumpstead, opposed was McFadden, Jevetkov, Rogers, and Parslow. And, uh, so item eight point eight is a report from, uh, Direct Corporate Administration regarding local area service parcel tax amendment by law four two five one. Moved by Counselor Wilbur, seconded, Counselor Schuman, discussion? Ready for the question? Oh, sorry, Counselor Jevetkov?
Um, I'm not familiar with this.
Jim, can we?
Could you? This is a whoopsie. We put through a bylaw with the wrong numbers on it, we caught that subsequent before the notices have gone out, we're just asking you to put the right numbers in.
And it says that right there.
So it's just a correction on some existing, this, uh, these areas, uh, Nineteenth Street, Hundred and Eleventh, and Hundred and Fifth, they're all places where we did, uh, infrastructure?
They're places we proposed to do infrastructure. Oh, no, these are the.
We did them?
Yeah, these were the two, two thousand and fourteen LAS project, so they, since , uh, the original amendment was.
Well, that's the paving?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was put through in the spring, prior to when the projects were completed.
So the work has been done?
Yeah.
Yes, and we're just.
We're just fixing.
Uh, finishing them off. The letters have gone to the residents to say, this is what you can pay upfront, or this is what you can pay over ten years.
Is it more or less than original?
Um, the old policy, you mean? Or just the change in rates?
The change, yeah.
Um, it wasn't, it wasn't an error like that. It was basically the community value as a percentage, and, um, those amounts were incorrect. But the rate on the project, at the beginning of the project and now, are still the same.
Yeah, well, important to know is that the, the customers getting the invoice are gonna get the amount they expected, uh, but if we had done that, it would have been contrary to the bylaw, so we need to get the bylaw aligned with what they were told to, they were gonna pay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Further questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Item 89, we have our report 14254 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding our guest franchise bylaw number 4252 with the PNG franchise agreement. Councillor Schuman?
I move that.
Move? Seconded, Councillor Wilbur, discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Woo-hoo! Mayor's business. So I've added about 12 things. So, first thing on, I want to raise is the Rotary Conference and the Rotary District Conference will be held in Dawson Creek in October of 2015 and as a result of Mr. Tim Shields, who's the district governor, Paul, can you make sure you correct me here if I go astray, and so they have the district governor's conference in our community because of Tim being a resident of the community, so they've got a significant conference underway being planned for the community in October of 2015. I think we've all seen some of the announcements with respect to Commander Hatfield will be here as the guest speaker, as well as a couple of other really prominent speakers as part of the conference. They're out there today promoting the conference. It's, I think it's around 600 delegates, if I remember correctly, from Dale Campbell, approximately 600 delegates will be in the community. I think the biggest issue they're facing right now is where they're going to, where they're going to find enough hotel rooms, because it's probably 300 or 400 hotel rooms for the visiting dignitaries. It's a weekend event and so I'm going to ask...
Rooming houses.
Right, rooming houses, suites!
If they take me to the conference, they can come stay at my house.
They're still lawful right now.
And so what I'd like to propose, if we can, is there's a couple of aspects to it that I think would be really beneficial for us as council to have Dale Campbell, who's part of the delegate, or the host committee group, and Al Modashaw in charge of sponsorships, but I'd like them to come and give us an overview of the conference in early January and for council to then consider some form of sponsorship to assist in putting this conference on for them. And they've given us the sponsorship package, but I just want to bring it forward and have them bring it forward and see what our thoughts are in terms of helping them in whatever way or if there is a will to do that, so I want to invite them to our January 5 meeting as a delegation. And I just wanted to give council a heads-up that I was planning to do that.
That's good.
Peace River Regional District, so we had our inaugural meeting on Friday and so we were all sworn in and the new directors, we have new mayor in Taylor, Rob Fraser, who's a past councillor and is the new mayor in Taylor, as well as Don McPherson, I think for all of us residents here, longtime resident of Dawson Creek and now have been a great community member and Tumbler Ridge is the new mayor of Tumbler Ridge, so they're both on the board, as well as the new directors, Director Spurling from Area C and Dan Rose, Area E.
Yes.
And so the board was sworn in, Councillor Schuman, Councillor Wilbur are going to be the alternates for me on that and there was a new chair elected on Friday as...
Great.
It was a split vote between the directors at 6-6, that, that vote takes place twice by secret ballot and then the tie-breaking method in the rules is a coin toss and so council, Director Ackerman, Mayor Ackerman was elected as the new chair of the Peace River Regional District.
By coin toss.
And so that's a process that will unfold and for me, it's, obviously, it's, the concern about the rural municipal split is evident and we need to find ways to bridge that and hopefully we work on that as 2015 to move it forward. Councillor Wilbur?
Well, I just wanted to mention that the new mayor of Taylor was actually elected as vice president.
Vice chair, yeah, you bet.
So now we've got a mayor of...
For St. John and the mayor of Taylor.
For St. John and the mayor of Taylor as chair and vice chair.
But that's a swing from, it was rural directors always as the chair and vice chair, so, you know, it's a pendulum.
I know, I know, I know.
So we, we've had the strategic planning, we're moving forward with it for January. Jim and I have had a follow-up conversation with the coordinators for our strategic planning exercise and hopefully we'll be in a real good position to be able to move that forward on, in January and I hope that we've got a day and a half set aside to really try to put some... For me, the, the issue of this strategy, the strategic direction that we set is about the vision and how we move forward to accomplishing that and I think there's some huge benefits for us as a board to be able to try and come to that understanding of what we see as the vision for our community and what that is in a five or 10-year window and how do we move forward to be able to accomplish that vision and I think it's such an important exercise for any board to engage in that conversation and discussion, to be able to have some common understanding and direction that we set for the community and I think, you know, somebody once said, leadership is about setting that vision and allowing people to lock in to following that direction you set as an organization and a great vision should be so clear you can almost taste it and to me, I always remembered that in terms of saying, for all of us, when we have this discussion and this understanding of what it is we want to accomplish and how we want our community to look, it's about the policies that we set to guide that and having a clarity in that vision to me is such an important component of that and then it gives the administration the direction and the understanding of what the goalposts are and how we're trying to move towards that, so I'm really excited about it and, but I think there's some value in it and I hope that we have a great day and a half with it and we move this city forward. And the final piece I want to bring forward is we had a request from the Quilters and Potters Guild for the Kelvin Performing Arts Center in regards to bringing forward some either additional access by providing them with the keys to the facility and/or we provide a night watchman or additional security for them to provide additional access, so I'm going to throw it back to you guys. Councillor Schuman?
Yeah, so I attended the K-PAC Society Board Meeting last week and knowing that this was coming forward, I had some good conversation with Terry Hannan. As we heard from the delegation, they are not prepared to pay anything extra for the extra hours or the extra days required and as far as I'm concerned, Terry's got a budget and Terry's got a plan over there and she has been working, I've got, she showed me emails and things where she's been trying to accommodate them, work with them, she's offered up extra days in the summer during the period that's closed, that it's closed, she's offered up days. They are not showing, even though they're holding workshops and classes and earning revenues from that, they're not prepared to pay for the extra, the extra staffing that would be required and she also provided me with, so she listed off the amount of days available during the week and then the amount of days they actually used and then she did the same and she did that for the quilters and the potters and she also included in the amount of weekend days available and the days used and from what I can see, you know, there's all sorts of days available that are not being used and frankly, this is Terry's baby, we've given this over to her and I think we should let her handle it. We've stated our, our reasons for having the, the rules that we have in place and, and now it's up to them to work with Terry as far as...
You're making that by way of a motion?
I, I don't see there being any motion here, like...
We're going to, we're going to deny their request for additional keys and/or security?
Okay, so I would move that we deny their request if you need that specifically.
Seconded? Councillor Rogers, discussion? Councillor Wilbur?
I just want to say that, you know, we, we at length discussed users having keys and codes and, and what the situation was before and we came up with an agreement with the, with K-PAC, with Terry and I foresee that if we were to allow this, now we're going to have a whole pile of other user groups come forward saying, we want our own codes, we want our own keys and, and you're back to square one. We put this in place for a reason and I think there's plenty of room for them to work with Terry and we've put it in Terry's hands to run the facility and I think we should just leave it in Terry's hands to run the facility.
Thank you. Councillor Jevetkov?
I don't understand why we are in the middle of it, like, why are we limiting the hours there? The Curling Rink is a public building, we don't limit hours there. To me, it seems like we should use the same model as they had in the other building where, you know, they operated.
Thank you. Councillor Rogers?
Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering how the hockey players like the Canucks would feel if they weren't actually, do they have access to their locker room anytime that they want to, the ones that actually pay for their fees and stuff? I don't think that, I don't think that we should make any special conditions in a public building for people to have access to and if they were concerned about safety with the kiln and everything else, that brings, brings up a whole nother question, is, if they're concerned about the safety of the kiln, well, now I am.
Thank you. Councillor Parzl?
Yeah, I, we're talking about, as was mentioned, a major asset of the community and we're not talking about a derelict school here. You know, I, I support the, the motion, but I just want to share that, as I was listening, I mean, I have friends who are potters and I know how firing and stuff, you need access and so on, so the question that I, I was thinking about is why was this ever put in such a, this type of building? Because I understand their challenge and I just don't think it's suitable for the type of facility that's been developed at all and in the planning for this facility, I'm just amazed that these things weren't, you know, actively reflected or did they think, oh, well, I just get access anytime, that's just so naive to think that.
Jim?
Well, of course they were considered and the representatives, K-PAC is not a prison. No one is required to be in the K-PAC building. The design committee worked with all of the groups, I was on that design committee and those were exact discussions people had. Do we wish to come into this new building with the limitations that it's going to have or do we wish to explore a different option? So for instance, the band was very close to exploring a different option and ultimately decided to live with the reduced square footage that's in the new building in return for the features that's in the new building. Potters were exactly the same. The potters agreed to come into this building, they knew there would be the restrictions on the hours. They, in fact, a big issue was whether or not it would be cheaper to try to relocate their existing kiln or put a new kiln in there. In the end, a new kiln went in because it was just cheaper than relocating the existing kiln. All these things were talked over, but we're seeing from all of the groups, now that they're in there, there's a certain sense of entitlement and now they are back, so just, the statement was made that they're paying rent, they should have unrestricted access, so the potters pay $200 a month.
Each individual?
No, the total group pays $200 a month, which doesn't begin to cover the utilities costs that they generate with that kiln. The potters pay $800 a year. It's not like Terry Hannan and K-PAC are trying to make a fortune off these groups. These groups are getting a really good deal.
Thank you.
Who pays $800 a year, I'm sorry?
Quilters.
The quilters.
Councillor Wilbur?
I'm just saying to me then, in conversations that Terry's having with them, I think she needs to reflect on her business plan because that's a hell of a deal, I might want to rent some space.
Thank you. Councillor Jevetkov?
Do they allow secondary suites?
Councillor, that's one question.
No, rooming houses are fairly good. No parking.
So, I, I would just like to get a response from Jim about us not limiting their access, about the potters, if they want access, they go to K-PAC, they don't come to us. Can we back away from that or...
That's, I think, the effect of your motion, you're sending them back to deal with Terry. Terry has a lease with us.
But Terry said that we are dictating the hours.
Yeah, no, our lease says that they can't allow unsupervised access into the building. That's what our lease says.
Okay. And for the mechanical, to me, that, the heart, the lungs of that facility and the mechanical and all that stuff, we don't want anybody messing with that that doesn't have the expertise and...
Well, as long as we've got insurance on there that's covered and if that's, if we're, if that's the only requirement, then it's up to K-PAC to run it.
That's how the lease is structured, that's exactly correct.
Councillor Parzl?
I just want to make sure I got these figures correct. $800 a year for the quilters, $200 a month for the potters?
Yeah.
As a club, not individual potters.
Yeah. And the band pays $300 a month.
How much a square foot is typical lease rate?
But this is all...
You're looking at Councillor Rogers when you say that.
But this is all dealt with by Terry, not us.
It's a real good deal. It's about 16 bucks a square foot and it's for a, for a larger shop or something like that, you'd be getting paid about $19 a square foot and I actually have some property that's rented at $25 a square foot, so that building over there, if you're getting 16, 18 dollars a square foot, you'd still be laughing.
Councillor Schuman?
You're talking about a month, not in, not in a year.
We need to keep in mind...
That's triple net, by the way, too.
We need to keep in mind that, you know, some things were said in the, in the, in the process of moving from old to new, that rents weren't going to increase substantially, some of these deals have been made years ago, et cetera, et cetera, and this isn't our place to be determining how Terry makes her bottom line work out, like, that's up to her. If in the end, you know, it's not working out for her, then she's going to have to revisit these agreements, but everybody has their own little special deal and, and there was some mention made by the delegation that, you know, they had access 24 hours a day, seven days a week and there was no problems with that. Well, I can tell you, sitting on that board for the last many, many years, there have been problems with that and, okay, so we're up there in a falling-down little old school, the problems, you know, didn't amount to anything significant. That could be a very different situation in our $17 million building, so I say, leave it up to Terry and...
Are you ready for the question?
Yeah.
All in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie, thank you. Diary?
Nothing new on the diary.
Sorry?
I just wanted to know if under Mayor's business that we could set a direction to staff to look at best practices on rooming houses and parking?
Oh, and possibly business licenses on rental...
My apologies, I should have done that. Thank you. Seconded? All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
All three of those things, by the way, would exist no matter what you do with the residential development, any?
Right, they're separate.
Thank you for that. Diary?
Nothing new on the diary.
Consent calendar?
So moved.
So moved, seconded, Wilbur?
Oh!
All in favor? Opposed? It's Carrie, thank you. Strategic priorities chart?
Don't have one yet, you were...
None? Question? Question and answer period?
Nobody signed up.
He's not letting me answer, ask a question.
You want a question? Sorry.
Yeah, so with regards to the letter from Gordon A. Anderson for Commissioner, can staff just comment on that? They're saying, what are they saying exactly, that wages or, like, I don't know that I...
They're saying that they're, when you strip everything away, they're saying that their compensation is set up better to handle volunteer departments that send response rather than the paid departments and they're certainly not set up for a situation like ours where we have to call in a back shift when we go out to an accident, so they're basically saying, too bad for you that you incur overtime costs because we don't cover them and too bad for you that you're paid equivalent to Vancouver firefighters because we don't cover that rate.
All right, that's what I thought they were saying.
Yep, sorry.
Councillor Jevetkov, did you have a question?
Just a question about the timing of the agendas. Getting an agenda on Friday afternoon, that doesn't give us a hell of a lot of time to... I had a manager that used to say, read this and digest it. Like, I can read the thing, but there's no way that I can digest it.
Yeah, the conflict for me in trying to get the agenda done on Thursdays can happen with respect to Peace River Regional District or something like that and so that's the dilemma and we'll, I honestly feel that and we will, we'll do everything we can to make sure we get it out on Thursday.
Well, we used to get them on Wednesday and, and that was workable, I'd prefer them on Monday, but, you know, we need a little bit of time, there has to be some consideration for...
Yeah, absolutely, like I say, I do everything we can to try to get it out for Thursday morning and it just depends on...
Council's current policy says you'll get it Thursday morning, after the mayor has approved it and it is distributed and we're not meeting that standard quite frequently because, for two reasons. One is the availability of the mayor and the other is the number of items that come to us from the citizens late, after the Wednesday cutoff. We are in the practice of trying to accommodate that, but we could stop. We absolutely could stop.
That's a bit habitual, too, I mean, if we're, if we're entertaining that stuff late, then it just, you know, it gets worse.
Some of it was, and sometimes you get this development stuff that comes and they want to get it into the council and if we, so if you don't get it and you put it out Tuesday or Wednesday, then they're going to wait two and a half weeks before it gets done.
I would sooner have a special meeting occasionally than wait Friday afternoon for an agenda.
Okay. Councillor Schuman first?
Yeah, so I don't have any problem with this, I am able to read it and digest it and as far as I know, staff is available to us over the weekend to answer any questions. It's not because Friday at 4 o'clock, they're not available to us, they've committed to being available to us over the weekend to answer any questions we may have because of the fact that we're getting it Thursday or Friday, so I, I don't know.
Councillor Parzl?
Well, I'd like to see it, look at our policy here, as I would like to have the agenda at the latest Wednesday afternoon, but notwithstanding that, I mean, I have no problems if there's any development stuff comes in, we want, we always wanted to turn that around. I'm okay with some one or two late items if it's development and we don't want to wait two and a half weeks. You just call the shot and we'll, we'll put it, I mean, we've had some late items because of, let's take the chiller stuff and we were told, I'm okay with some late items, but the meat of the agenda, I want to be able to not just talk to staff, I may want to talk to other people about it.
Councillor Rogers?
Do my own homework. Okay, I was going to talk about that later. It was a 241-page agenda, I don't know if that's a whole lot or what, I just, I looked at it...
So on the high side, let's say.
Oh, my God.
And sometimes it's bigger.
But for the amount of, there was some, some things, but as we were reading through it near the end there, I was looking at it going, I don't even remember reading this. There was some other questions that I had written down that I wanted to ask, but I was too busy playing catch-up. There was some other questions that I had written down that I wanted to ask, but I was too busy playing catch-up. But even if we got them on Thursday, I'd be okay with that. But if there wasn't something, if there, if there had to be something added to it, and it came on Friday, I'd be all right with that. But the sooner I get it, for me personally, is the better.
Like I say, for me, honestly, I'd rather, I'd rather, I agree, right? Thursday is the goal to try and get it out, but Regional District gets on that timeframe and locks me down for Thursday, and then I don't get here till late Thursday afternoon, sometimes till 3 or 4 o'clock after Regional District to get the agenda done. So, if you want it sooner, then I throw that to the administration.
Let's alternate the meetings or something, then, so they're not conflicting with Regional District. If there's a will, there's a way.
Sure. No, I'm, absolutely, I'm, honestly, I'm good with whatever you guys decide you would prefer. What's, so, Administration, what's the impacts to us adjusting our council schedule now for, so that we're not conflicting with Regional District for agenda?
Well, you've set a meeting schedule that looked at things like your attendance at UBCM, that sort of thing. If you're, if you're looking to move the meeting dates, we would have to get, you've never looked at conflict with the Regional District because they're Thursdays, you're Mondays, you haven't done that. But you could do that. We could bring you back another proposed schedule that didn't conflict. We can, you know, the, the deadline matters not at all to staff. Whatever the deadline is, that's what we work to. Now that I actually have staff, I, I might deliver on your deadlines, you never know. When we didn't have any staff out there, it was impossible, as you know.
Councillor Wilbur?
Well, I just didn't get anything taken into consideration, because we, we did discuss this before, and I know I was really overwhelmed when I first sat here. And by changing that, it meant moving the cutoff for input back as well. So, that meant it's at a Wednesday, it had to be Monday. So, we have to take those, we have to take that into consideration, too, that if we want to bump getting it ahead a day, that's bumping the cutoff back for people to put, give us input. So, I just want to put that out there, that that's something that changes on staff, right? Because that's a discussion.
Let's just aim for Thursday.
All right. So.
Aim for Thursday.
Thursday it is. We'll do our best to make that work and get it out as early and timely on Thursdays as we can.
If something isn't ready, does this send it out Friday?
I was gonna say, then, could we add if, if development permits and that kind of stuff come after the Wednesday that is just sent out to us, it's on Friday or whatever, as it comes in, and just as an addition?
You can always send me out there, you know.
Okay. Yeah, well. All right, we'll do our best. Thank you. Consent calendar, strategic priorities, question and answer period?
Years and years on Wednesday.
Nothing? Media question?
All of a sudden, when you guys came on, it doesn't.
Yeah, I know it's one.
You won?
One question?
I was distracted looking for the city's unsafe actions bylaw, and I missed 8.6 concerning the application for the nightclub. Was that approved without any sort of amendment?
Yes, it was approved to take to public hearing.
We'll go to public hearing.
With the condition in the, in the report that there'll have to be an agreement on parking on the leased lot.
And that's in the existing building there? They're not considering that building or anything?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
What a good idea.
And I'll probably grab Jim to explain what happened, like the residential stuff and stuff.
Good luck explaining what happened there.
Thank you. And we have no clause, so I need a motion to adjourn. Schuman, Wilbur, all in favor, opposed, it's carried, thank you. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate your.
Great work, everyone.
Conversation, discussion, and input today, it was good.